The January, our June 3rd meeting of the Tufton Borough Planning Board. I would ask if you have a cellphone, please put it on silence or vibrate, your choice. So before we get going tonight, I know some of you have been here for previous meetings. I see a lot of new faces and some of you have probably never been to a planning board meeting before for a site plan review, so I try to take a few seconds just to explain what we're doing here. So, but basically this is the planning board. We essentially deal with permitted uses and zoning. And occasionally we write zoning, which the town votes on, which they accept or do not accept, and that becomes the zoning for the town. So the primary project we have before, or application we have before us tonight is for a cell tower. Telecommunication towers are permitted in the town of Tufton Borough, in the telecommunications section, as well as in the rest of the zoning, in, believe all zones, but certainly in this zone. So what the planning board does is it looks at the site, they look at the application, make sure it meets the requirements of the zoning. We work with the applicant, the neighbors, to see if there's items that can be made in harmony with the town zoning and with the wishes of the neighbors and such. So we've already had one full meeting on this. This has been continued a couple of times due to the board was waiting for the third-party engineering report. So just so that everyone understands what that is, the applications within the town of Tufton Borough are required, if the board requires it, to pay for a third-party engineer whose fiduciary relationship, or in other words loyalty, is to the town of Tufton. So though they have the public paying for it, the relationship is ours. And what they do is review the application, because believe it or not, we are not experts on RF, as you can see, for our telecommunications. And they make findings about how accurate the application is, the need, they answer questions for the board and the public, and Ivan is over here as well, and Ivan will be speaking a little later and going over his report. The public session is still open, which means that everyone will have a chance to speak. We ask that you be courteous, respectful of your neighbors, respectful of the applicants, respectful of the board. If you've already spoken, please wait for everyone else who wants to speak to be able to speak, and then if you would like to speak again, if it's a new item or a question, you will be able to speak. Also, before you speak, you do have to provide a name and your address, so that Ian over here can write it down, so that the minutes are accurate. So before we get going, does anybody have any questions? Or does anybody have any general planning board questions or zoning questions? All right, great. So we're gonna do a little bit of housekeeping first, which is the approval of the minutes from the last meeting. I have one change on page four, middle of the page, where it said, "Set amounts, keep it under small quantity generator status." He confirmed the oil is in drums and it is in secondary containment. The correction would be it is not in secondary containment. Did anyone else have any changes?
Could you appoint George?
We're gonna get to that in just a second. Can I have a motion to accept the minutes as written?
As this corrected.
As corrected.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. And May 20th minutes, did anybody see any changes that needed to be made? Can I have a motion to accept the minutes as written? All those in favor? Great. Okay. First up, continuation, public hearing of Verizon Wireless and Jameson Barbara Duncan, tax map 50-2-17, site plan review, installation of a telecommunications facility and associated equipment. Public hearing continued from April 1st, May 6th, and May 20th, all of 2021. So just for a rehash on this, Verizon Wireless and the landowners have asked permission for a telecommunications towers, which is permitted under the town zoning on the aforementioned property. There was quite a bit of conversation about drainage, water runoff, buried utilities, gates, what the gates would look like. We went over a photograph that was submitted, which is available in the public record, which showed it from multiple different angles, from multiple different locations. Verizon also submitted noise estimates, they were gonna bring more noise estimates tonight, and what those had to do with was with the maximum number of carriers. If everything was running at once, what was the noise levels at the property? We were waiting for the third-party engineering report, which we have here as well. And there was also some questions about health levels at the property lines, which the applicant was gonna be prepared to answer tonight. And I think that pretty closely sums it up. So what I'm gonna ask for first is the applicant, I know you guys left with some questions, and to come up and go over them with the board?
Does this work, does it work here?
Oh, excuse me, one moment. Lorraine Hadley is absent. I have a motion to appoint George as full acting member.
So, second.
All those in favor? And Kate?
I have to abstain from voting on this since I'm gonna butter.
So Kate has refused herself. Okay. Please.
Great, thank you everyone. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Scott Anderson. I work at a firm broadly in Portland. I work on local zoning for Verizon Wireless, community infrastructure. I'm here tonight with Brian Ross from Structural Consulting. He's the individual that obtains information in front of engineers as to where towers need to be sited, and works with landowners to try to find folks who are willing to host new sites. We also have Oscar Suarez with us tonight from Dewberry, that's the engineering firm that put together the site plans that you've been given. And we also have Sohail Wazmani, who, from C-Square, he is our radio frequency engineer. He's kind of Ivan's counterpart, the one that the town has retained, and helps Verizon Wireless identify locations and also heights of sites, so that all of these different towers will work well together, so that we get, you know, we get the best kind of coverage that we're looking for from the network as it is built out. And we're here, as the chairman mentioned, to kind of give you an update and some additional information that we have provided since the last time we had met, and then we're here for any questions. And probably what I'll do, Mr. Chairman, is kind of go through the new stuff. If Ivan's gonna come up and talk about his report, we'll kind of leave our kind of thoughts and comments on that till after he goes, so that the board can kind of hear from Ivan for his speech before we start talking about that, and maybe that will work the best. But we're flexible and we can kind of run to this.
I think that's a great way, run through your stuff, we'll let Ivan come up, and then we'll see what we have for questions.
Okay, great, super. So basically this is 130-foot tower proposed, quite an extensive access drive, about 900 feet. For the most part, the equipment at the bottom consists of backup generators and the radio equipment and the like, so we don't do the big equipment shelters with the air conditioning units that we used to do. So pretty low impact site. We had provided information about coverage from the proposed site and the improvements in coverage in the original packet, along with the photo simulations that we had done. I think everybody knew that there had been a balloon test, and it was noticed, so people could kind of see what was what. And then at the last meeting, as the chairman mentioned, there were a bunch of topics that came up. One of the issues was the, it's called the maximum permissible exposure, that's the kind of amount of energy that is allowed to come from these sites. That is regulated by the Federal Communications Commission, and there's a scale of 1 to 100%. And we're allowed to operate within that range of energy emissions. So we have provided some additional information. This comes in the April 27 submission that we had provided to the board after the original application. We walked through the MPE, as we had noted, the maximum amount, which is about 131 feet from the tower, is at 2.14%, so that's still within the landlord's property. This is a very, very low energy site, and after you get past that 131 feet, it continues to drop off. We had noted that at the closest property line, the estimate is that we're about 1.5%. And then again, the farther you go away from the tower, it drops off significantly after that. So very low energy site, and then even at the property line, even more so, about 1.5%. We also were asked to take a look at potentially using the Abenaki Tower to the north, and we provided a radio frequency plot showing coverage if we went on that. And what it shows is, it's a very low elevation that's available on that tower, and it's much farther to the north, obviously, than where we're proposing. And the combination of those two means that it would only provide some benefit and coverage right at the base of the Abenaki Tower, but would not, is too far to the north and is too low to meet the coverage objectives of this site. And I think as the planning board maybe has seen, we've also filed two additional applications for two sites on town property, more to the kind of northeast. And these three sites are intended to kind of work together, and the Abenaki Tower is just too far out and too low to be an adequate alternative to building the new tower that we proposed. The next item we looked at was collective sound impact. So even though there's only one application before you for one site, as we've kind of noted, the tower's designed to handle up three more antennas, and there's enough room within the fenced area. The idea being that once you have a tower that is built, it is better to encourage other carriers to go on that tower than it is to let them build new towers kind of close by, so you can get increased coverage for multiple carriers without needing more towers. The board had asked us to assess the sound. We went to our sound engineer, who is actually very helpful, because he's actually worked with US Cellular and AT&amp;T and the other carriers on these kind of sites where you've got multiple carriers, and everybody's equipment is a little bit different. But as noted in the report that we attached, he actually understands how some of their equipment works and the noise generated by it. So he was able to do a pretty accurate calculation of Verizon plus three other carriers with the typical equipment that they use, and modeled all of that. And even in the worst-case scenario, with everything running, the fans, the backup generators and everything, we're still below the 50 dva limit at the property line. And so even when this thing is fully loaded up, the last co-location applicant that would come to you to be the fourth one on the tower, very likely would be able to still meet the sound requirements in the ordinance. So that makes this, and partly, partially that's because of where this is located. We're not close to the property line here, we're pretty far away, we're pretty deep back in the lot, and that allows you to put a bunch of folks on there without really getting sound levels that go up too high at the closest property line. We talked a little bit about the entry drive, and there were two things, to try to do a more kind of traditional wooden gate at the entrance, and so the plan was amended with a note saying that we will do a more traditional wooden gate at the entrance than we would do a table or a kind of steel gate. And also, there was an interest in running the underground, the lines, at least within view of the road, before it gets too deep in the landlord's property underground, so you didn't see towers and the distribution lines running down. So what we propose, I think we kind of talked about this, is because we have to cross the road from the main tower that we're tapping into, we would have one pole on our side of the road to bring it across the road, so we don't have to dig up the road. But then there, it would go down there, and then for a 200-foot distance, it would run underground. So as you're coming and passing the entrance, you're not gonna be looking down at the line of poles and wires going down. It will pop up and go above ground, but only after you're kind of out of view from the public's way. And those are changes that we put on the amended plan that became the vehicle from the submitted submission. Initially, we had asked for a waiver for the more comprehensive stormwater calculation, and then Brian reminded me that we had one. So we have removed the waiver request and we've provided you with the stormwater assessment. As I think you saw on the plan, the real issue of stormwater is the driveway, and there are a couple of stormwater mitigation features that are proposed to deal with any rainwater runoff that might be traveling down the gravel driveway. Other than that, the tower site itself is crushed gravel, so it pretty much absorbs water where it lands as before. But the engineers looked at the kind of before and after impacts, and actually concluded that because of the mitigation that we're putting in, we would actually minimize the amount of stormwater moving away from the footprint of the project area when the project was built, because the mitigation that goes in will actually do a better job than Mother Nature in keeping the stormwater right where it is and not allowing it to move around. But most certainly, the stormwater is not going anywhere near any budding properties. It's all right there on the landlord's property, and it's gonna be definitely better than even the existing vegetation. Two specific waivers that we had asked for, in addition to the height issue, which is a bigger issue we'll talk about more this evening, we had asked for a waiver for soils data on the basis that there's obviously no subsurface wastewater treatment system here, and so we asked for a waiver to provide that additional information, and went through some of the waiver criteria that you apply. Basically, because we're not gonna do anything that's gonna impact soils, or require the board to kind of evaluate soil conditions in order to find that we meet a standard, allowing for a waiver of that submission requirement. Also, the ordinance allows the board to ask for a more detailed traffic analysis from a project. So to the extent the board kind of normally does that traditionally, we would ask for a waiver from that. After construction, the site is visited about once a month by a technician, and sometimes less than that if there are no issues. And so traffic to and from the site will be extraordinarily low. So we don't think the traffic site will actually find anything based on one trip of, I guess, two trips a month, coming and going, and so we ask for a waiver for providing further traffic analysis. And I think, kind of before getting to Ivan's report, that was the new information that we provided to the board in the April 27 submission. So we're here, if you have any questions about that, or of course, any questions about the original information that we submitted, and then, you know, after Ivan kind of talks to you about his thoughts and findings and assessment, we can pop up and use our thoughts
Does any member of the board have any questions? On the construction, if this was approved, can you explain, I've been down this road, it's not a great road. Can you explain what the needs would be as this goes in? I mean, how large are these sections, how big are the trucks?
Oh, for the vehicles that are getting in?
Yeah, I understand it's, you know, construction itself, but there's quite a large concrete base to these, so I imagine it's quite a bit of concrete trucks, and I assume these towers come in on tractor trailers.
Yeah, they normally come in sections, I don't think this will be a helicopter job. And there is, you know, the exact size of the foundation gets sorted by the contractor, so the amount that comes in. But the 12-foot gravel access road that will be improved here is designed primarily to manage the construction traffic, because the vehicle that comes to visit afterwards is just a simple sport utility vehicle for a technician who has to visit the site. So the, both the grading and the angle and the cut, and so anything that we have to do, the turnaround areas at the end are all done, so that they're sufficient for the construction vehicles that normally install these sites.
So the existing conditions of the town road that this is accessed on is sufficient?
Yes.
You understand you'd be responsible for any damage that was incurred to the town roads?
Yes, and if it was posted, and we had to stay off of them, we'd have to comply with those requirements as well.
Okay.
Can I just clarify something? You said you may have to helicopter something in, is that what you said?
Well, some sites that are very remote, they sometimes will bring the sections in by air.
Is that an option or non-option here?
It's not usually necessary, and it's not preferred, just because it's complicated, there are safety issues and all kinds of stuff. So it's pretty simple to bring the sections in, you know, by truck. It's not like, you know, these wind turbines, where you see these trucks going down the road with a, you know, a 90-foot section. They're much smaller sections and they're put together, so.
As far as the tower goes?
As far as the tower goes. So for a 130-foot tower, three sections, so, you know, each one 50, 40, 45 feet.
And your base is concrete, which you'll pour?
That's right, and so.
It's not cast?
That's right. And so what happens is, after, if the planning board approves a project, it goes out to bid, the contractors do the geotechnical work, and then figure out kind of what the foundation needs to look like based on what the fillers and ledge and all of that.
Thank you. I didn't follow my own directions. And as we spoke about, you guys understand that you'll need a bond for removal?
Yeah.
If approved.
Yeah, and what we normally do is, the contractors are required with their bid to include a estimate for removal, because it will be based somewhat on the scope and the size of the foundation that has to go into the tower. So they provide that, and then normally we would provide that to the code officer for review, and that would have to be posted before we pulled the bill.
So the aesthetics of it when we drive by it?
The wooden gate?
Yeah, and if there's details about the wooden gate, you know, we could incorporate that in. I think normally it's a little more simple type gate, but we can do whatever, you know, kind of design.
Okay, wooden gate, crushed stone, 12-foot drive?
Wooden, yeah.
Pretty simple, curves up, so you see, you don't see beyond the curve?
That's correct.
The underground lines go around the curve, and then, then you go back onto the poles?
And they pop up.
Yeah, so it pretty much looks like almost what you see today when you drive by it?
That's right.
Just a little improved?
Just a nicer proof gravel entrance line.
Okay, thank you.
Any member of the board have any questions?
Per on the fencing around the equipment, is that because of kids trying to climb all the fences and stuff, is it a small mesh that you're gonna use?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a kind of standard-sized steel mesh. I think there's barbed wire on the top of this one, this one as well, locked gate, usually the lock, whether it's a key or a code combination, that's information that we give to the public safety folks, so that they have access to it. But you're exactly right, it's primarily to keep people from climbing the tower, and most of the electric equipment is contained within kind of sealed boxes, so that's not, it's not like a substation where you've got live wires, but there's still fiber that runs around, and you, you know, a creative person might be able to make a little way up the tower, so it's primarily for that reason.
In five years, bittersweet will cover it completely.
That's right.
Is there, if somebody gets in there, is there sensors at all that can shut down things?
No, there's certainly sensors that monitor the function of the site. So if somebody got in there and did something that damaged it, we would know that there was something wrong and that the site wasn't operating anymore, but there's no kind of security sensors there. You know, most of these are on properties where, you know, people live or there are businesses, and so there's a little bit of kind of watching of what's going on there. And then there's enough of kind of frequency that if we see evidence, someone's trying to dig under the fence here, or someone looks like they've been monkeying with a lock to see if you can get through it, well, you know, then we can check in with the police and say, hey, we just saw some activity here, and flag it. But I think most people understand that this is not a good place to go hang out and picnic, and this one in particular is set pretty far back on private property, and, you know, the only real way to get there, the bushwhacking, is to just come right up and down the driveway that most people would say so.
Do you put up a sign to keep out?
On the fences, there will be a lot of signs, so nothing down by the entrance, just because the property owner can continue to access the gate and go use that. But certainly, when you get to the fence area, there's all the kind of standard OSHA signs about, you know, electricity and danger and do not enter, and, you know, kind of that kind of standard.
What's the rate of vandalism on your sites?
That's a very good question. I don't know that I have, I would know all of that, although we do do some follow-up with code officers on, like, follow-up monitoring, and I, you know, for 12 years, 13 years doing this, I've never heard from a town or Verizon that one of the sites had been vandalized or damaged. For the most part, the, you know, the six-foot fence and the barbed wire and the lock does a pretty good job of keeping people out.
So just so I'm clear, if you have the maximum number of carriers, and you are beaming at maximum capacity, everything it's got, you're at the property line, is 2.14% of the amount permitted by the FCC?
No, so the 2.14 would be our site only, and that's at 131 feet, which is within the property boundary. We then calculated that our site only would be at 1.5% at the property line. So if you added three additional carriers, they have different frequencies, so it's not exactly the same. But you can see that the kind of energy level that we're operating is very, very low, so even with additional carriers, you're not likely to get to the 100%. And I think what we talked about bef, now, the sound study, we did based on everybody with all their equipment going gang buses, and that was 49 dva, which meant the standard. If you had additional carriers that came on, and you were tracking the collective, they would have to kind of evaluate that as you added the additional sites. And, you know, if it got to the point where the town felt, okay, you're now over the level at the property line, which I don't think happens here because of how low they are, that would be the point at which the town would say, okay, we can't put in, we can't put more people on this. That person would have to go use, you know, a different site someplace else. But the levels that we're looking at are very, very low, and at least for Verizon sites, everything I've done the last 10 years has been, you know, under 5%.
So what would the estimate be? And I understand that they work at different frequencies, and you have no way of knowing what they put on there. But what would a rough estimate be on the percentage at maximum capacity with the maximum number of carriers?
So do you have any sense of the other carriers or what their MPE is, or?
If I did the cumulative addition, simple, and reducing the height?
Yeah.
Let's say worst case, each one is at 3%, so Verizon being at 2. So, you know, you're looking at 15%.
So a maximum of 15, so 20% of the permitted amount within the 130 feet around the tower, which would be, I assume, lower at the property line?
Even lower, literally 20 feet. You know, if you look at the, kind of the scoop graph that came in that April, once you get past that 131 feet, it drops off very, very low, very quickly. And, you know, as you're driving around, you certainly have seen these co-located, a lot of these towers are much closer to property lines, some of them are near high schools, they're on top of Dartmouth Hitchcock Medical Center, you know, sitting right on top of, you know, that room and that room. And so the amount of energy coming off of these antennas now dropped off very, very fast. And the only thing we really have to worry about are folks going on the tower to do repairs. So when that happens, you have to shut the antennas off. You can't go up and start, you know, hanging on the line and making adjustments to the antennas with them on. That puts you too close, and that goes above the worker standard. But for everybody else, you get any distance away from these sites, even with multiple carriers, and the levels are extraordinarily low.
If, just, at 128 feet versus 108 feet, because it's RF and the way it travels, it travels like this, more or less, there's a draw here, but it travels. Would it be a safer tower, 128 than 108?
No, I mean, the numbers are so low that that doesn't, that's not really affected by height. So the 131 feet is that kind of sweet spot where if you're right under the tower, as you've noted, it kind of goes over your head before it comes down to ground level, which is why the highest level is at 131 feet. But again, that highest level is like 2.1%. But again, that highest level is like 2.1%, so you, even if the tower was 40 feet, you know, low and so the antennas were close and would hit the ground much closer, you know, it would be higher there, but maybe it's 3.4% or some other very low number.
So, the lower, if the lower, the closer to the tower it is that it hits versus the higher, would be a little spread, a little further out?
Potentially, yeah, and when we do small cells, we, those go on telephone poles right in people's front yards. Those are the kind of, they look like Pringles cans on top of telephone poles. And those, you know, have like about a 15-foot radius around them where workers can't go. But again, same thing happens, they drop off right away. If you had a 190-foot tower here, then the levels would be lower because the antennas are farther off the ground. But again, you're only looking at small changes to small numbers. So, the height issue really goes more to what Ivan had assessed about this balance between how much coverage do you get and what are the kind of consequences of going up or down in height? But it really doesn't have anything to do with these energy levels.
So, the 131-foot maximum energy point, is that based on a height of 128 feet?
Yes.
Okay, so if, if the tower is at 108 feet, do we know where the maximum energy level would be?
It's probably, you know, 121 feet or 118 feet. It would be a little closer to the tower because the antennas were a little closer to the ground. Maybe the 2.1 would go to 2.3, you know, but again, that's the kind of range I think.
I think we're splitting hairs on the RF.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, of course, yeah.
That percentage. So... Any questions? Or other questions?
Actually, I have one for down the line.
Hold on, because you...
I can't... Oh, so I go...
No, you can, but you can't...
I go to the public...
You're fine, but you should state your room address.
Oh. Kate Nesbitt, 17 Prince Point Road. If I recall correctly, this permitting is for what, 4G? Is that correct?
This is...
What is it?
Yes, still 4G.
Okay, so in the event down the road you wanted to make a change, like 5G or whatever, you'd have to come back, is that correct? You can't make changes to what will already be sitting there?
I believe so, because the antennas would change. And so, when you say plan, we're limited to what we've done and I'm assuming we have to do that.
And as we spoke of in the last meeting, you know, we only have one other cell tower in town and if there's been changes to the antenna, it's never come to this board before.
Yeah.
So, one of the things the board needs to talk about is saying, is this good for the maximum? You know, they're coming for six, five carriers, six carriers. And do they need to come back for each carrier? I mean, what kind of what we're weighing and looking at is maximum coverage. Or do they need to come back if they want to change from 4G to 5G? So, that's something we need to decide. And if we decide to, it needs to go away as a condition, so...
Yeah, and certainly we're fine coming back if there's changing antennas. The sizes might change. The basic construct and the operation and the emissions and all of that stuff are not going to be significant. But, but that work, I mean, the one piece about the other carriers coming in, I think, I mean, totally up to the town to decide how to handle subsequent applications. Our view, of course, is that we're only coming to get planning board approval for what we've proposed, which is the one set of antennas at the top. As Matt notes, the ordinance says, hey, you've got to design your tower to hold multiple carriers because that way, when the next carrier comes on, they can't say, "Oh, I'm sorry, I can't go on that tower because it's not strong enough. So, you need to give me a permit for a brand new one with two doors down." I think that's why the town has that in there. So, we've been able to design the tower so it will hold multiple so that the next person coming in can't kind of weasel away out of it. But certainly, we're only expecting to get approval for the one thing that we've done and if the town wants to reduce some subsequent...
How often do you change the antennas or change the, you know? I assume antennas become outdated and you get better ones and, you know...
That's a good question, is there... I'd say once every two or three years.
What happens to the antenna? Was it made of, is it by the glass type pole or this? Okay, so it gets brittle?
Well, and also the technology changes. Even if it goes from a 4G to a 4G antenna, the technology has changed, so they need to swap it out.
It's kind of like your laptop.
Yeah.
Well, that's every week.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? This time on Mass Ivan, and Ivan's gonna go over his report.
I warmed up the hot seat for you.
Yeah.
Chairman, board members. Ivan Gossip with IDK Communications. I was hired by the town to do a peer review on the application, Verizon's application. Just gonna touch upon a few points from my report. What I started out pointing out in the report is what goes into an RF analysis? What are the items? What are the things that affect coverage? How do you determine coverage? How do you model coverage? What are the pieces that go into it? The GIS, the information, terrain information, land types, land clutter, it's called. And all those pieces of information go into computer modeling to determine where you have coverage, reliable coverage, where you don't have reliable coverage. I also touched upon different types of site configurations. In the application, they had touched upon, in the visual analysis, monopine stealth type, regular monocoles. In the acoustic report, they talked about, they indicated antennas within a pole. So, I gave you some pictures and some descriptions about different types of options, how sites can be configured and the pros and cons and some of the drawbacks that, that you have. For instance, if you have a pole and you put antennas inside a pole, they need more vertical height. You're condensing those antennas from a wider spread horizontal and now you need more vertical space, which limits then your co-location. The pole has to get taller to afford the same amount of co-location in the pole. So, anyway, as far as the coverage analysis, we take the Verizon data supplied. We then input it into a model. And our model is not the same as Verizon's, it's similar, but it's not the exact same software model. We take that information together with like a GIS information and model, model the coverage. And we provided several figures. And first thing we do is we take a look at the existing footprint. What do they have today? They've identified that we have gaps in coverage, specifically Route 109 and Tufton Borough Net Road, the adjoining roads in the area. So, figure one, takes a look at that existing coverage. So, we validate that, yes, indeed, there are gaps in those areas that they identified. 109, Tufton Borough Net Road and the adjoining roads. Figures two, three, and four, we looked at the proposed height, antenna height of 128 feet. And then we dropped it 20 feet because your bylaw indicates antenna heights, 20 feet above average tree canopy, which I believe is 68 feet. So, we had the applicant models 88 feet, which is the 20 feet above the average canopy. And then we went another 20 feet above that at 108 and then the proposal at 128. So, what we found was that there was similar coverage between 128 and 108. When you got down to 88, that we noticed impact to coverage that was not as good as those other heights at 108 or 128 in those areas that they targeted, 109 and Tufton Borough Net Road and the adjoining roads at 88 feet. So, that was our analysis on the RF, which effectively varied the heights. And we looked also at the MPE report, the site drawings. Standard engineering practice was done on those reports. We didn't see anything out of the ordinary. Didn't have any comments on the site plan. I think you guys addressed, you know, the underground, I would have suggested that as well. But there was nothing, nothing glaring coming out of the site plan application drawings as well.
Ivan, could you just give us a little bit of your background?
Sure.
I'm sure there's...
Sure, so, I was probably one of few kids who knew when they went to college what they wanted to do and that was RF. Back then, we called it RF, today we call it wireless, that's the buzzword. So, I've been doing RF work for 34 years now, showing my age, yes.
Youngster.
Yeah. And I've worked for a variety of different companies. Got my start actually at Motorola in the land mobile radio business, publishing business, your police, your fire departments, EMS. Their RF radios. They operate different frequency bands than the carriers, some bands that are close in frequency range. Done a lot of work in the microwave region for microwave point-to-point antennas. Done a lot of consulting work over the years, a lot of RF work modeling. But my work has been with municipalities, with state agencies, with counties, cities, et cetera. You know, I've been offered many a time to work for these tower companies, to go to these meetings and present. But I've always stayed on the side with the municipality and tried to keep my, you know, my experience there and not bust the line, if you will.
Ivan, as far as the exposures that they're talking about, it sounded like a maximum of 15 to 20% on the property line. I assume you look at a lot of these?
Yep.
How does that rate in comparison to what you would normally look at?
Yeah, that's, I mean, I've seen a lot of these and that would be the extreme, the extreme side of a percentage with all carriers, understanding, you know, all the transmitters are up. And, you know, the analogy I like to give on the antennas, on these panel antennas, it's like an ice cream cone. You take the tip of the cone, you put it at the antenna and the beam goes out like an ice cream cone. So, you know, you're, if you're standing at the base of the tower, you're in the cone of cone of silence, if you will, right? That's not where the energy is being transmitted. It's being transmitted out towards the horizon. So, you know, those, those levels that they're talking about, you know, with just their installation of 2% is what I've seen in a lot of other applications, very similar results.
So, this level is not at all abnormal?
No.
This would be typical for what we'd see on cell towers?
Right, right, and actually, in some cases, we're, the boards, you know, okay, this is theoretical, right? You can actually do what's called a power density study in the field. You can actually have test equipment where you can go out and you can measure the actual density, power density at a property line or whatnot. I was involved in a apartment building where tenants were concerned with insulation, you know, on the roof and there was actual field equipment, test equipment. They went out and measured, they did the calculations. Typically, what you find is when you do the calculations and you actually go to the field and you actually measure with test equipment, you're measuring less than what is predicted, is the model. The model's conservative. But you can certainly, after installation, request the applicant to go out there, take a measurement and you have a document now that has that, that level.
So, Ivan, RF waves, so that's, that's your expertise, but you must understand a little bit about other types of waves, microwave?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, x-rays, gamma, ultraviolet?
Mm-hmm.
What's RF compared to those safety bars?
Yeah, it depends upon the frequency range, okay? When you go higher in frequency range, that's when you get into the x-rays, the gamma rays. People who have radiation for cancer, for instance, those are high gigahertz-type frequencies. When you, when you look at their application, they have some frequencies in the gigahertz, the 2 gigahertz, but they also have frequencies in the megahertz, the 700 megahertz range. You'll find like your police and fire operate at 150, 450 megahertz and a lot of the exposures, this has been around for a long time and it really got its exposure to or visibility, if you will, in the broadcast industry. You had people who worked around, you know, TV stations, radio stations that are pumping out 50,000 watts of power and they're in a frequency range that is in the UHF range and they, they had done studies that, you know, your human body, your cells, for, for your body to absorb the RF, that's when you have cell damage. You know, that's, that's what, and when you have radiation, they pinpoint so your cells absorb, the tumor absorbs the RF energy, it kills, kills the tumor. So, they found that there were frequency ranges that were more susceptible. Actually, the UHF frequency range found, they found the human body tissue had a wavelength that was similar to the size of the wavelength of UHF, so that means you have to do a lot more. That's where the broadcast industry came in that was concerned about power levels. The power levels we're talking about here are nowhere near TV stations, radio stations, et cetera.
The concern of a lot of people is the safety of it.
Yeah.
That's why I bring this up.
Yeah.
And I looked at American Cancer Society, what their, what their thoughts were on cell towers. And they talked about the RF as being a non-ionizing radiation, okay? Which means it does not do damage to DNA cells, basically. So, it's, it sounds like it's one of the safer, it's kind of runs around the FM range, RF. It's safer than stuff like ultraviolet, gamma rays, which are very potent.
Right, right. And microwaves that have, you know, big dish antennas, radar, radar installations, you know, big radar installations that are pumping out huge, those antennas have huge gain. So, the effective radio power is huge that comes off of those antennas.
In your opinion, Ivan, this is safe?
I'm not a health scientist and I'm not a health physicist, so...
But it's not...
I, what I would say is that they, that they have accurately defined the regulations that govern this with the FCC, the OET bulletin 65, which has been around for a while and those are the calculations that need to be used to generate the MPE.
So, as I'm looking at these, there is a huge difference in coverage from existing to 108.
Yeah.
88's approved.
Yeah.
But I, if there's, I think I saw one spot where there was a difference between 128 and 108. Is that accurate?
Right, yeah, it's very similar.
Okay, so I look at the percentage of change on your chart here, okay?
That chart came from the applicant, actually. I requested that they...
Okay, so the applicant said it was like going from... that it was like going from the eighty-eight-foot tower is about three point eight-six percent in Tufton Borough, percent of change in coverage.
Yep.
Better. And then it goes to five point oh-two percent at a hundred and eight foot.
Yep.
And then it goes to five point five-two
Right.
at the one twenty-eight foot.
Right. There's a bigger jump from eighty-eight to one oh-eight than there is from one oh-eight to two, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yes. Yep.
I mean, I look at the map, I see a significant...
Want me to read?
Yeah.
All right. Does any member of the board have a question for Ivan? Before we open it up to the public, which by the way, we have to do some reading before we do that, because I have a stack. Does the applicant have some questions for Ivan or responses or...
Yeah, just very brief. And I'm gonna just kind of hit the highlights, and so has Eric, the board has any question. We agree kind of, I mean, we have kind of given you Ivan as an option because he works well with towns. He'd get...
Hold on.
Yes.
Just so everyone's clear, as we know, Ivan, his loyalty is to the board. Ivan was recommended by both the applicant as well as the planning board's attorney, which never happens. So he's got it.
Yeah, there's not a lot of people that do this for towns. And so, yeah, so Ivan is very helpful because obviously, this stuff is complicated. You're gonna have no idea what we're telling you if you don't have someone. And so we appreciate his assessment review. And you're right, when you look at, you know, even though the models are a little bit different, we agree kind of with his assessment that when you look at like from the top, the coverage from the existing is obviously significantly problematic. Eighty-eight really doesn't do much. The difference in the plots, I think, that Ivan has done from one oh-eight to one twenty-eight don't show a huge difference, and it's probably a percent or so. But one of the things, and I'm not sure all of this data, whether Ivan had all the specifics, but when we look at doing the fine tuning of the height, we are looking at the impact on population centers, the transportation corridor, and business centers. And so you probably appreciate that when we look at the coverage map, we're less interested about filling areas in in green where there's woods and no people living, there's no road, and more interested in making sure we're hitting places where there are people and where there are roads. Because what we don't want is dropped calls while people are moving around, and we want better coverage where people are living and working. And so even though it's very difficult to see the change, when we run the numbers from one twenty-eight to one oh-eight, we see there's like a one percent chance in the, a change in the land area. But that's twelve percent impact on the population centers and about a nineteen percent reduction in coverage for the people that are, you know, driving on one oh-nine. And so the reduction doesn't affect the kind of overall green coloring of the map. But what it does is weakens the coverage in the areas that we're really targeting at a level that's kind of greater than you would think just looking at the maps. And again, I don't think we gave Ivan the breakdown, but in the end, I think our thought for the board is, your real challenge here, and I think any board, you're looking at two things that you're comparing. You're looking at the relative change in coverage if you make a tower taller or shorter. And then you're looking at the visual impacts of making that change. And so if we had a hundred and thirty-foot tower that you could see from ten places in town, and if you dropped it to a hundred and ten, you would significantly reduce the visual impacts, then you'd look at this twelve percent and nineteen percent hits on coverage, and you'd say, you know what's worth it? Yes, the coverage won't be as good. There will be more drop calls when people are driving around. But we're getting a big benefit by dropping the height that twenty feet. So I think the challenge for the board is, you know, the SIMs, and we're all looking at the same simulation, so everybody gets ahead in opinion here. Our view of the SIMs is that a hundred and thirty feet, the visual impacts are very, very low. Can only be seen from a couple of spots, and most of those locations are four, five, six miles away from the tower, and they're not very big when you do see them. So if we drop it to one ten, the question for the board is, do you get any actual reduction in visual impacts that go along with the reduction in the benefits of the coverage to residents of Tufton Boroughs that are driving around? I don't know what the magic number is. A nineteen percent hit on Route one oh-nine, and that's measured right at the boundary between Tufton Borough and Wolfborough, is a pretty significant reduction. And our thinking is that the visual impacts are not going to be that much better at one ten. So that's why you all get paid the big bucks. And we're trying to give you as much information as you can to make that kind of balancing decision. But other than that, you know, everything that Ivan said is right on the money, and we appreciate and respect his opinion.
So what you're saying is while we're looking at this, and the green doesn't change a whole lot from one oh-eight to one twenty-eight, I mean, land area, land mass, the actual percentage of population covered because of where those changes are is, I think you said nineteen...
Twelve percent for population areas and about nineteen percent as we're measuring kind of along Route one oh-nine.
I do have a question about all these, these coverage maps. I mean, I'm living and driving around this community and in this area, drop calls happen all the time for me. When I look at the one oh-nine corridor here and where you show you don't have good coverage, I can nev, I can't think of ever having a call dropped along there. Now, I don't know if that tells me that I'm glad I don't have Verizon as my carrier or if, if there's something else happening there. I mean, I realize this is your signal coverage. This is not other carriers. But this area to me is never dropped. And that's just anecdotal, so...
And in a good old day where we had roaming, you would just get pinged and additional costs, and your phone could grab another carrier's phone. But now, we don't do that anymore, so all of the carriers are coming in. And so you're absolutely right. If you're not a Verizon customer, these plots don't match up with your experience. I should also, Sohal had some probably clarifiers or corrections, and I should come on up?
Yeah, just going to say that the five miles of additional road, incremental road coverage is not only one oh-nine, it's the entire improvement of incremental.
So it's not just, so five per...
Five point some miles is the entire difference when you drop from a hundred and twenty-eight to one oh-nine. That's the difference in the road coverage that you will lose.
Five miles.
Not, not just one oh-nine.
It's not necessarily continuous.
So it's not five miles on Route one oh-nine?
Right, it's five miles of road, right.
Here, there. Thank you.
And I'm gonna ask you this question, and it's really gonna screw it up, screw you up.
So I'm gonna let Sohal answer it.
Roads in Tufton Borough or roads in Wolfborough?
So I think that...
We did the analysis.
Yeah, so if you look, I think the calculation shows that there's benefits in Wolfborough, but the larger benefits are in Tufton Borough.
I don't have any problem with coverage in Wolfborough as I do along the line of, don't say, I can't get anything out of that line where I live.
Oh, you have Verizon?
No, I have U.S. L. But I have Verizon at home because they told me U.S. L. was better.
Your chart says it's quite more significant in Tufton Borough than it is in Wolfborough.
Yeah, I think we did, like, right now, there's some perimeter coverage in Tufton Borough that's coming from sites in Wolfborough and the surrounding towns. I think in Ivan's report, he does have a chart at the bottom of page three that look at the kind of percent town area change. That goes to the green area and shows the difference between the two. So there is benefit to Wolfborough, but the primary percentage increase at all these different heights is in Tufton Borough. And the other piece is that we haven't completely shared is that, you know, when we look at what we're calling Tufton Borough two and four, these are the other two sites that are up on town property where we've just submitted the application. This site is intended to connect in with those. So, you know, as well as the sites that are in surrounding towns, and that's why I was worried.
Actually, this question should probably be for this gentleman. Is the hundred and twenty-eight feet important for the two other proposed sites? Now, we can't weigh an application that's, you know, not presented to the board, but my understanding of cell towers and how they work with elevations and how they work together and such and so forth.
It is like a big, you know, the lack of coverage you have, then there'll be more holes of coverage left. And, you know, eventually, if those coverage holes are there, then, you know, we're gonna be back here asking for another site.
You're already gonna be back asking for other sites, so... Ivan, does what they're saying about percentage of population make sense to you since the applicant's paying a large amount of money for you to be here?
Yeah.
He might as well get, he might as well get his money's worth.
Yeah, so as I indicated, their modeling software is very sophisticated with respect to that data. I don't have access to that data of the business side of the business population and whatnot. So, I mean, I have to defer that they are running it accurately. The percentages for geographical coverage seem to make sense. So, you know, it, all I can say is that, you know, if the geographical calculations seem to make sense, then the population side, we carry forward as well.
Do you have any of that modeling here by any chance? No?
No.
I was figuring, while we had all these RF engineers, we just iron that right out.
Just throw a screen out. I'm assuming that if there's proprietary...
Yeah, if it's proprietary, then, you know, at that time, you're gonna have to say that on any...
Okay. But you have no reason to believe I would not be accurate?
Right, yeah, yeah.
Now, the hundred and twenty-eight feet versus a hundred and eight feet, I assume that's important to co-location for multiple antennas on a tower? Because when I see towers, their antennas are one on top of another.
Right, exactly. So if you, there's ten-foot separation between carriers. So the lower the tower, again, if you get down to that, that lower height, that's not gonna work for as many carriers, right? You know, you're reducing the amount of available space for other carriers. It, some towns would rather have, you know, short towers and multiple towers. And others would say, oh, you know, let's just extend this up and not have two towers, let's have one. And again, a lot of that is the visual. It's, you know, you're weighing each application on its own.
So after this tower, one twenty-eight, it took into consideration those other four, three co-locations on the tower.
Right.
I assume that's correct?
What's that? I'm sorry.
So a hundred and...
So at a hundred and twenty-eight feet, you consider three other co-companies joining in?
So the tower is designed structurally to hold three antenna bands beneath us. If this was a hundred and ninety-foot tower, which is the max the board can go up to, I'd say with a high level of likelihood, you could put three other arrays underneath, and it would work for three other carriers. Even at one thirty, though, you're starting to get down there. I mean, our, what we're trying to indicate is, you know, based on our network, one oh-eight creates some problems, and so we need the one thirty. Whether AT&amp;T or somebody else could come in and use one eighteen or one oh-eight, roughly the two spots underneath, is kind of based on where their other towers are. Because that's what they're trying to do is, they're trying to connect to their other sites but not overlap too much. Because that creates, this is a very non-engineering way to say it, but the phone is looking at multiple towers, trying to figure out which one to use, and that's not what you want either. So they design the heights and the locations to fit, and it's different for all the different carriers. They have different frequencies. So I think what your ordinance does is what most ordinances do. And that makes sure that we build a tower that's strong enough so that structural integrity can't be a reason that co-location won't work. Whether it works for the engineers and the RF engineers is kind of a carrier-by-carrier thing. And each company has their own system for figuring that out. And as Sohal mentioned, it's all proprietary. We don't know what it is carriers know.
Do you have many towers that have multiple companies on them?
Oh, yes.
You do. So what are the chances of this tower having multiple?
I would, actually, I would, I'm gonna pass that by Ivan.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
He's our guy.
Yeah, exactly.
How likely is it for somebody to want to co-locate on a hundred and eight-foot tower versus a hundred and twenty-eight-foot tower?
Again, you're gonna have more spots available where I have one twenty-eight than one oh-eight. You're, it's, again, it depends upon their other sites, where they're located.
But I'm gonna assume a hundred and eight-foot tower, which means that the second antenna is at ninety-eight.
Ninety-eight, right.
That's not as attractive with the spot.
Right, again, right, exactly.
The likelihood of somebody wanting to go on another tower.
Yeah, and again, I look at it based upon the engineering, and the application is for one applicant. So I, you know, when I do a review, I have to do what is in front of me.
Yeah.
So a tower that is, can structurally hold three other carriers practically might hold no other carriers. You never know. Just, just because of location, terrain, total height of tower, where antennas could be located, and that sort of thing.
But for me, what I'm trying to weigh is, we, you know, say, hey, we have a hundred and eight feet. Are we gonna be two years from now AT&amp;T saying, we want a tower? We want a tower?
Well, certainly, the shorter the tower, it would seem to me that more likely somebody else is not gonna wanna co-locate. Find it practical.
They would potentially build another tower on the same property. If they could get at least with a landowner, then you'd have two structures instead of one.
And then you weigh two towers at ninety-eight feet or two towers at a hundred and eight feet versus
Right.
one tower. You can fill in the blanks somewhere.
Right.
Okay. So just for a rehash, geographically, one hundred and eight feet is not a whole lot different from a hundred and twenty-eight feet. But population coverage-wise, it makes, and roadways, such areas that are important, it makes about twelve percent difference.
Twelve to nineteen percent.
Twelve to nineteen percent difference. And the third-party engineer does not have reason to believe that is not accurate based on the information they provide. So everybody agree that's accurate? Does any member of the board have any questions for the applicant or for Ivan? All right. So the public session is still open. So this is gonna be an opportunity for any member of the public who wants to speak. Before we do that, I have to do some reading Before we do that, I have to do some reading, as they have requested. A email that needs to be read in. And just a reminder, when we do get to that public session, please state your name and address. So, first up, Melissa Van Ness. No address was given. Hi, I was one of the virtual attendees of yesterday's planning board meeting. I left after about 45 minutes of extreme frustration in not being able to see any meeting in progress nor hear any participants. I understand that there is video available. I would very much appreciate your forwarding that to me. Thank you, Melissa Van Ness. Uh, the next one is from Kathleen in Albertus. I'm going to butcher this, Skier, Skier Rappa, for Chipmunk Lane, Tufton Borough. Dear Tufton Borough Selectmen, first I, this was addressed to the selectmen. First, I'd like to thank each of you for your hard work and steady support of the town of Tufton Borough. It's a great town, and your contributions to continuing to keep the town protected yet moving forward are so important. Please accept this letter as evidence of support for adding a cell tower in Tufton Borough. I reside on Mirror Lake at Fort Chipmunk Lane, and increasingly, I'm doing more work from home with dependence on Zoom and other platforms, especially for presentations. It is critical that my internet service be strong. It is not only frustrating and embarrassing to have an unstable connection during important meetings. It hampers my ability to work. Most people I connect with around the country can no longer conceive of being in an area that does not have solid internet. Sometimes I work internationally in some of the smaller countries, or more remote areas are not always stable. As a resident, I would find absolutely reliable connectivity very helpful. I did happen to see exactly where the proposed tower could be placed off of Tufton Borough neck road and believe that this is a good spot where it would be mostly unseen and positioned to provide excellent service. I realize that there are many factors to continue, consider, but this town, this upgrade is something that is critical to my household and helps move our town towards a positive future. It is my hope that you will facilitate the building of this tower. Please be in touch if I can address any questions or further explain my position in regard. This is from Dusty Davies, no address given. Dear Selectmen, this email expresses my strong support for a cell tower to enhance the cell phone service in the area. Recently, it seems to have been worse than ever. Wherever we have learned as a result of this pandemic how essential, essential different forms of connectivity to the outside world is. Thank you, Dusty Davies. Next is from Haley Corning. Dear Planning Board, we request this email be read into the minutes of the May 6, 2021 meeting, which was continued. We are writing to state the opposition to the proposed cell tower at 20 Eaglemere Road. Our family, Dule Corning, has been taxpayers on Eaglemere South, formerly also Eaglemere, since 1946. Cell towers have been around for less than 25 years. Their long-term effects on people are not known. Any effects from five, any technology, both short or long-term, are not known. Any technologies that are to come to our backyard and their effects on people are also unknown. We value our property, our health, and our children, grandchildren, and generations to come. This will be an eyesore in Neymar, the gorgeous views from the Lake River. Thank you for, thank you for your consideration. Haley and Scott Corning, 15 Eaglemere South. Next one is from Frederick Hayes, 1 South. For those of us who have had property in the neck for well over 100 years, we love the country, woods, wildlife, and dirt roads. This has been our past and hopefully our future. The installation of a cell tower here defies any words that could be used in public. Question, there are three future planned spaces shown within the 50 by 50. Does Verizon get to decide what fills those spaces, or does the Tufton Borough Planning Board take part? Uh, the next one is from Pamela Thayer, no address given. As residents, I guess they did, as residents of Mirror Lake and having lived on Tufton Borough neck for over 30 years, both my wife and I are expressing our strong opposition to the proposed cell tower on Tufton Borough neck, first, and Pam Thayer. Next is from Steve Davis, 49 Eaglemere Road. Dear Board members, given the initial hearing was done virtual and we were unable to hear or participate in the proceedings due to technical issues, I decided to come in person with a continued hearing with my neighbor, neighbor Christie Sarrazes, share my concerns about the proposed cell tower. However, as you know, the hearing was continued until May 20th. Unfortunately, I will be traveling and unable to attend this meeting. As such, I decided to send you this email, this email. I have written with two letters to the town expressing my concerns about the height of the tower, 130 feet compared to the height of the tree canopy, 66 feet. While I am no engineer or highly learned, it is necessary to have the top of the tower be more than 60 feet above the tree line. The tower as proposed will be an incredible eyesore when someone is on the lake, either in a boat or in a snowmobile. We really don't need an eyesore like the cell tower in Olden Village Bay. Verizon's application showed many pictures of the locations where the towers could not be seen, but conveniently did not show any photos from just off the shoreline. I find that admission very interesting, at least and possibly disingenuous. So, I respectfully ask that the following conditions be placed in the tower. If you are solely inclined to approve it, first, please require that the maximum height be no more than 90 feet, that is still 30 feet above the tree line. And second, that the tower be designed to look like a tree by installing artificial limbs on it. Thank you for considering this quest. Sincerely, Steve Davis, 49 Eaglemere, New York, Tufton Borough. This one is from Sarah Palatier. Hello, I want to express our concerns with the huge increase of new construction, housing developments going up into town. Our small town is growing too much, too fast, and quickly losing the rural character we love. It will soon stress our town resources, police, fire, plumbing, et cetera, as well. Something needs to be done to slow down development, try to keep large tracts of land intact and undeveloped. Actually, this has nothing to do with the cell tower.
What's wrong with that?
Uh, it's against some conditions.
I'm sorry about that.
No, it's okay. Uh, next one, Zach Graves. Please read this letter in the minutes of meeting for Verizon putting in 108-foot cell tower. While cell towers are important to have, this is not the location to place one. For one, our cell service isn't bad enough to have a need for a cell tower to be constructed in the area. The studies for our cell towers are harmful to one's health while also lowering the property value in the area should be enough to deny the proposal. Think of the health risks we are bringing to our children and families living on this road. I want to keep my health intact, so I may one day see my children graduate high school, get married, and eat my grandchildren. You should deny this proposal for the health and well-being at a minimum. Members on the panel, I have one question. Would you pass this proposal if it was going in your backyard and endangering the lives of your grandchildren? Next, from William Pottle, to whom it may concern. I am the owner of 33 Cross Right, Cross Neck Road, Mirror Lake, New Hampshire, 0353. I am strongly opposed to construction of a cell tower for both health and property value reasons. Thank you, William Pottle. Uh, last one from Ken Hoover. I'm going to read the beginning section, and then there's quite a few attachments, which will be available with the public record in the town hall if anyone would like to view them. Good morning, Leanne.
I think that, I think that might have been read in on April 1st.
No.
Oh.
This is the question to Gary.
This is May, this is May 17th.
I'm just trying to see if.
Uh, good morning, Leanne. I ran into Gary Quah the other day, and a brief conversation raised the questions outlined below. Gary suggested that I email the following to you and ask that you be forwarded to the planning board members today, if possible, so they may hit ample time before Thursday's meeting to consider the content. I've copied the section below from the Verizon Wireless Site Plan application. It raises some thoughts and questions for me. Here's where I need help on my understanding. It would seem to me that the planning board exercised an act of will. I mean, it seems to me that if the planning board exercised an act of will, i.e. to permit an increase in new tower height up to 190 feet, this would constitute a variance or special exception. Does this show that the planning board have the capability of refusing the increased height of the tower? From the Verizon Wireless Site Plan application, Section 13.4.4, height standards. Based on the tree canopy survey shown on sheet Z3 of the site plan, average tree height of 150 feet of the proposed tower is approximately 68 feet. Section 13.4.4D of the zoning ordinance provides that as an, as an initial standard, towers should be designed to be no higher than 20 feet above the average tree canopy. At 88 feet, this facility would not provide sufficient coverage to address the inadequate coverage in this area. Section 13, oh, sorry. Under the waiver provision of Section 10.1 of the Site Plan Review Ordinance, proposed 130-feet height is consistent with these standards and provokes the public interest. This facility, working in conjunction with others proposed for the town, will dramatically increase wireless service for residents of Tufton Borough visitors. No co-location opportunities exist for the proposed site, and an 88-foot tower will not provide adequate service. At 130 feet, the proposed tower is significantly shorter than a standard 190-foot tower, and the photo simulation shows the visual impacts are minor. Permitting Verizon Wireless to construct at 130 feet will meet the purpose and intent of the wireless ordinance specifically to allow carriers to improve service while respecting the needs for the, needs for the responsible cell tower development. For this reason, we request, respectfully request that the planning board authorize 130-foot tower. Mr. Hoover's response further, as I try to increase my understanding of the planning board's ability to go against this tower that is relates to New Hampshire state law. I confess my understanding and experience in these areas is very limited. So, when I researched this area, I talked with a friend who was a planning board in a neighboring town. And he wrote the following after this with his permission. I was referring to granting a variance by zoning boards or adjustment ZVA. Every town with a zoning ordinance has a planning board with ZVA. These along with the Conservation Commission or the Land Use Boards in New Hampshire Town. So, to grant a variance from any requirement of the zoning ordinance, the ZVA must conclude that all of the five requirements are met. One of the five requirements is that the value of surrounding properties is not diminished. This requirement is also used commonly for special exceptions, variation on the same theme as variance. So, my logic is that the ZVA is always held to a standard that requires the granting of a variance or special exception must not diminish surrounding property values. And this is a well-held and well-understood ten of the land use. Then, a conditional use permit or a site application in front of the planning board should be held to a similar standard. It is a bad idea to grant variances or special exceptions that diminish surrounding property values should cell towers clearly will diminish surrounding property values be approved. Should the standard not apply to a planning board decision, if it is clearly applies to ZVA decisions? There are very likely plots of land somewhere in Tufton Borough that a cell tower could be placed on and not disturb the neighbors or reduce surrounding property values. So, why this site needs to be approved when it will impact the neighbors, eliminate your family's dream of retirement homes, and lower your property values seem contrary to that we hold dear in land use decisions here in New Hampshire. Please read and consider carefully. I will look forward to you Thursday's meeting. I've attached two articles that conclusively substantiate how cell towers diminish property values. P.S., I'm sending a second email that will have an article attached that addresses the negative health conditions caused by cell towers. There's quite a few attachments. If anyone would like to read them, they are in the public record. Okay. So, just as a reminder, if anyone would like to speak, please be courteous. Please state your name and your address. And with that, who would like to speak or ask questions to the applicant or the group?
My name's Ken Hoover, from Tufton Borough, New York, 85. Appreciate the opportunity to address this group. After listening to all you folks, I am clearly out of my depth of knowledge of this stuff. So, I have as many questions as I do comments, that's for sure. Uh, some of the questions that I have have already been answered through the discussions. So, I'll have to be editing as I go here, and so forgive me as I stumble along. First question is about the added active tower location, and I've already had my answers there. Question for Verizon, I understand that Verizon would put in three new towers, including this one in Tufton Borough. And would that be the total of four in total? Four towers in Tufton Borough?
I can answer that. There's applications for two more towers, one on Middle Road and one on Sodom Road. So, that would be a total of three. That we, that the board has received at this time.
Okay, thank you. All right, so, that's our discussion. I have read somewhere, and I'm not too sure this is true. Is it true that the cell tower installation could have been stopped if there was an endangered species at risk?
So, federal permits usually require a endangered species review. So, in this area, a lot of times, it's like world pagonias, um, some plants, some animals. So, part of what they have to do is they have to do a review of that to make sure they do not exist on the.
Yeah, and I think in the initial application, because we have a federal FCC license, we have to do a NEPA, that, that's the, the analysis that includes historic archaeological, tribal, natural resource, endangered species as part of that assessment. I think we provided you with the summary information from that. Um, there are no such resources, you know, within the project footprint here, so this is a site that can personally under, under that provision. They're not actually prohibited if you have, like, we, we deal with the long-eared bat, northern long-eared bat a lot, which is not endangered everywhere, but it's a protected species. So, it can affect some of the timing of any tree clearing. But, but with regard to this site, there, there's, there are no kind of issues like that.
Okay, thank you. Now, again, this is something that has been, uh, addressed. But, we'd like to ask, uh, several times Verizon, April 1st, referenced the federal law of the regulations emissions from cell towers. Are these the guidelines from the 1996 FCC regulations?
Yes, so the, the way the, the RF works is, back in the 96, 97 Telecommunications Act, the federal government decided to set standards for these emissions. And when we gave you the 2.14%, that was based on the rule that the FCC regulates, um, emissions from the site. What the, uh, Congress also did is it decided there was too much kind of bad information out there in the world about perceptions about health effects. So, they created a standard that all wireless companies need to comply with. And then, they, they have a provision in the Telecommunications Act that doesn't allow towns from using concerns about health effects in making tower permitting decisions. Because you can find a study from Belgium that will say just about anything online. And so, the feds decided that they were going to regulate this, make sure that these were safe sites. Um, and so, that's kind of exclusively done at the federal level.
Hold on one moment. Ivan, that's accurate?
Correct.
Thank you. Not that I don't trust you.
No, no, that, that's why Ivan's here.
That's why he's here.
Yeah, these guys, lines that were currently operating over, they haven't been updated in 25 years? Since 96, 97?
I'm not sure, that's a good question. I mean, they're, to the.
The, the standard has been around for that. Like, as I indicated before, a lot of these, these numbers came from the broadcast industry with TV stations and radio stations. It, it still refers back to the OET bulletin.
Yeah.
Yes, that's the government document.
Thank you. April 1st, Verizon reassured us that this is a very low emissions tower. It was discussed today, um, 2.1% to 2.2% of allowable emissions by government standards. The quote was used, "These are really small numbers and fractions of small numbers." And, as Verizon indicated, the energy from the tower dissipates and decays quickly. There was some mention of a study, and I think this is the MBE study, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. It was, and forgive me, I listened very carefully to the, to the meeting online, YouTube meeting. Some of it, I listened to multiple times. But there are a lot of times I was muffled during the hearing. So, I'm afraid I, I'm covering a few things that you've already covered. But for my clarity, I should appreciate it. Now, help me understand again, what is the purpose of that study? That's for dissipation and decay, is that how?
The purpose of that study is municipalities are allowed, and should, ask applicants to prove that they're complying with these FCC rules. And so, the study is to provide the board with, um, the, the information showing that the site will operate within the allowable limits.
Thank you. Now, this is something that worries me, and let me help you understand, you know, of, uh, my sister and I own, we're one of these brothers. And we own property, and, um, we both thought, oh, it would be nice to put it in a retirement home. And because of the questionable nature of the health, uh, issues around the cell phone tower, and also the potential of having the property be done, we really had a second thought. Also, my younger brother here that I've known, all his life. He's, uh, been fighting cancer for over 10 years. And his home is, is within 10, or excuse me, 800 feet approximately of this tower. So, some of the studies that we'll be referring to in a minute have prompted me to say, and I'm not on the job, that's not my purpose. I would love for you to be able to allay all my fears on this tonight, in the mid-future, because I would love to consider Tufton Borough a place. I lived here 20 years, all the time, somewhere here all my life. Was looking forward to coming back, but now it's all a question. So, please understand that. These decay figures, can you translate these into real terms for allaying them? Such as how much radiation would an individual be absorbing at 500 feet from the tower? For instance, would it be equal to standing next to an microwave oven set on high 24 hours a day? I'm looking to understand that, if you could help me understand.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm not, kind of to pick up on Ivan, I don't think you have people here that are health professionals to talk about that. And I think the reason is because what the FCC decided is that they were going to address this issue upfront. And it was before, as Ivan has noted, it's before you had Verizon Wireless and AT&amp;T. And so, the federal government had to come up with standards. And as we all appreciate, cell phone towers are everywhere. You go to Concord, you go, you know, to Nashville, you go anywhere, and you go around here, you know. To the extent you have a phone that's working, that's because you are traveling around in a cell phone signal that's allowing your phone to work. So, what the feds, um, had to make sure, though, was that when people got close to these towers, for the people that worked to install the antennas, that they could assess and regulate the levels to make sure primarily that the workers were safe, but also that when you installed them, that whatever the carriers were doing with their equipment would stay within levels that were deemed to be health, safety, and completely fine for everyone. And so, that's the, the standard that we keep referring to, is, um, the standard that was determined by people smarter than us, that this is the safe level for operating these sites. And so, um, at the levels that we're talking about, it's very, very low, even for that standard. Um, and so, all we can kind of say is that this is a site that is operating, even at 131 feet, where no one is, except the landowner, well below what anyone who has studied this issue thinks is, is an issue. And so, um, you know, but I'm, I'm a lawyer for a cell phone company. I, I, I can't tell you what the. the comparison is to a microwave, and you wouldn't believe me if I told you, but all I can tell you is that the whole system has been set up to make sure that we can get the benefits of this technology and to do it in a safe way for everyone, including the butters, including people that are 500 feet away, who have health issues in the home nine yards, you know. As you go around, you've got your phone, it's picking up signals, we're kind of, you know, exposed to all of these all the time, and they're regulated to make sure that they're safe. And we think, you know, this site, along with the other 200 we've done in the last, you know, 15 years, are all safe. And again, we put these on water tanks next to ice boats, we put them on, you know, Dartmouth-Hitchcock Medical Center, they go on hospitals and office buildings, and, you know, if you go to a Red Sox game, you're surrounded by them, because they've got small cells to make sure everybody can, you know, send you a selfie when the, you know, the ball lands in their lap. And so, you know, these are everywhere, but they are designed to comply with the standard that makes them safe.
Thank you. And maybe Ivan, I could ask you directly, is that okay? Is there any information for a laborer like me, where I can understand in 100-foot increments how this decays? In other words, at 500 feet, 600 feet, 700 feet? If we're at 2.2 emissions allowance at 500, 600, 700, 800 feet, what is the percentage of those areas? And how does that relate to the real term?
Yeah, so it is, it's not linear, it's exponential. As you get away from, from an antenna, distance-wise, the signal drops drastically. So it's not a linear scale, it is exponential. And the formulas that, yeah, Ivan, I don't, yeah, the formulas that are in there from that standard, you can, you can actually, you know, they have computers that do all the calculation, but in the, in their density site of H2, there's the actual calculation, the formula. And you plug in the numbers, which, you know, the distance, the distance from the antenna, the vertical distance from the center of the antenna, and you calculate what that power density is. And the health experts have determined, you know, over the years, that it's one degree centigrade increase in tissue, I believe, temperature over one centimeter square can cause damage. So that's what they base this on. And different frequencies have different wavelengths that are absorbed by different, the size of tissue, you know. It's, to explain it, if you have a TV station, if you have a TV antenna in your house back, you know, the 70s and 80s, the length of the antenna was designed to absorb energy at the frequency of the TV station. So it would absorb that energy and then pass it to the television. So that link is critical. All that's taken into account in these formulas. So if you were to, if you were to take this formula and actually do it by hand, you could calculate out that distance and what the change is, go at 100 feet, go to 200 feet, go to 300 feet, and you'll see that it's not linear, it's exponential.
Let me see if I can put this in very layman terms for the board and for everyone. The government has a standard. Their obligation is to meet the standard. If I'm wrong in any part of that, correct me. Which has been checked by IVA.
Right.
If this board were to deny an application based on the health, you know, saying, hey, it's at 12%, we don't personally find that acceptable, more than likely that will be overturned so fast, because the government has deemed the standard.
I appreciate that. So there really is no simple answers to how it decays, you know, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 800 feet? It's really complicated.
You have to calculate it, you know, and that's what the graph is.
Is this thoughtful?
Yeah, so let me just...
Yeah.
Kind of hold up, and I can show you. I mean, this was, so when we did the MBE, they calculated a graph, this was part of when we were trying to figure out the property line. So this shows, based on different frequencies, kind of what the energy levels are in 200-foot increments away from the tower. And you can see the spike right here is at 131 feet, and then it drops down. There's another kind of bump up at, you know, 800 to 1,000 feet, and then it goes down. And of course, this scale goes from 0 to 2.5. So it's been blown up, so you can see the difference. But if you did this from 0 to 100, you're talking about tiny little things at the bottom. And, you know, by the time you get to, you know, 600 feet, you're talking about under 1%, 800 feet, there's a spike there, but the rest are down by .5. And then by the time you get farther out, they all start to drop below those .5.
Can I get a picture of that?
Sure.
Thanks. Smile.
Yeah, and this, I would say, all of this is, as Matt has said, all of this is in the application that's available at the town.
I read the application, and this there.
One thing to also understand is that the way antennas work is this, it's called near field and far field. And that's why there's two levels of acceptable percentages for worker safety, people who work in the near field of an antenna. That's where you're getting your big exposure, you know, when you're, when you're near those antennas. You go down to a provincial in Boston on top of that roof, workers are only allowed, you know, a certain amount of time, those transmitters have to be turned way down for them to go up on the roof and actually work on antennas, because they're in the near field.
Thank you. And this was discussed briefly earlier, when will Verizon reiterate 5G on the side of the mill?
Yeah, we're not sure.
And are there any health studies that reassure us that 5G is absolutely safe? Do we have anything on that?
All we have is the application as it stands, we can't...
I was curious, please show me. Okay. 5G towers consume about 2 or more pounds of energy of a 4G. Is there emissions also similarly larger than 4G?
Well, again, it depends upon the cell carrier, because the operating different frequencies. Typically, 5G typically is a high-frequency gigahertz signal, and it's intended for short-range communication. It's intended to have high speed in a short, in a small area. And the intent of 5G is to offload the signals going to a 4G site, so that the 4G site doesn't get busied out, it can't handle the traffic. And the example is, you go to a sporting arena, you go to a concert venue, where there's a lot of people, and they're all using their phones, the 4G site gets busied out, because the 4G site is not only taking the traffic from that venue, but also people in cars over here, you know, in other areas. So the 5G is intended to be focused on those venues, offload that capacity from the 4G. So what you're seeing is the 5G build-out is in major cities, major metropolitan areas, where there's large congregation people. 5G coming up here, the 4G site is going to handle the capacity for quite some time, is my guess, up here, because you don't have large populace of people. And the 4G is, you've heard of LTE, 4G is just one step of LTE evolution. LTE is going to improve, there's going to be, there's going to be faster speeds, and it's going to handle that capacity of small rural areas for a long time to come, in my opinion.
Thank you. This has been answered? Oh, I do have a question. This pertains to when they do populate more companies on the tower, and you mentioned that Tufftonboro will be informed, is that right?
That's something the board needs to discuss, on how to treat that.
Okay. Because it'd be important for me as a citizen to know, you know, if these things are going to be populated further. Doesn't make a lot of difference, I mean, you have four times emissions with four towers Now, and this is a hypothetical question, and again, you've answered a lot of this, we're up to, and I think you asked a question about it, we're up to 15 to 20% with the full amount of carriers on the tower, on the internal, is that about right? Okay. What's, what is the, what's the likelihood of Verizon and the other carriers of going above and beyond this in this area? Do you have any notion? I mean, could we bump up from 40 to 40% to 60%? And if so, would we be notified? How does that work?
Again, that's something the board will have to have a discussion about, whether the town will want to be notified if there's changes of antennas or additional carriers.
Thank you. And I guess there's two parts to my question. What is the likelihood that Verizon and other carriers would bump up their emissions?
Well, I mean, the carriers don't plan on bumping up the emissions, what they do is they make whatever necessary changes to the antennas as the technology changes. What I've seen over 15 years, and I'd be interested in Ivan's thought, is most of the sites we did 15 years ago, whatever they were, were more around 9, 12, and maybe until even the low 20s. And that was with 180, 190-foot towers. And I'm seeing lower numbers, so I don't know if there's a correlation, but, you know, I think it, there's the same default, where all of these companies are regulated to make sure that their facilities provide service and do it in a safe way. And, you know, the town should do what it's comfortable with about permitting in the home nine yards, but that doesn't change the fact that all of these companies are regulated by the FCC, and they have to operate within those same requirements.
Thank you, really appreciate that. We've already addressed this noise. And questions for the planning board? I'd like to clear on the process of approval for the tower. Does the planning board vote to actually approve the tower?
Yes.
Okay. And can the planning board vote against the cell tower, even if Verizon's application is completed by the letter of the law?
No, that would be against Dartmouth v. Hanover, which is the court case that regulates approvals of planning boards and applications. The planning board has a discretion over the height of the tower, but the applicant has to prove two criteria, which is that the design is substantially better, and also that it is for the benefit of the town of Tufftonboro. So those are the criteria that they have to prove in order to get the height from, I forget exactly what it was, to 128.
Right.
So most of the conversation you heard with Ivan, and with us talking about co-location and stuff, is the board weighing, is the additional height in the interest of the town of Tufftonboro, and is it a substantially better design? Because those are the two questions that have to be answered for them to get to 128 feet.
Thank you.
You also had a question on whether this required a variance or not. They do not, it is permitted in the zoning under the town of Tufftonboro. It is, first of all, this, it is allowed in the low density and medium density in town cell towers. Okay, that is part of our zoning board, okay, requirements. So what happens here, the, it doesn't need to go with the ZBA, okay? We are allowed to create a week, and that is spelled out on page 52 in this book. We're basically making such a finding that the planning board will adhere to the provisions of the waiver section in the Site Plan Review Regulations. So in the Site Plan Review, which is this book, it tells us how to handle that. So that stays with the board.
Very good, thank you, appreciate that. Verizon's applications, in their application, they contend that the cell tower promotes public interest. I believe that promoting this public interest per Verizon is to provide adequate cell phone service. I can tell that promoting the public interest could be even more accurately defined under four headings. Providing adequate cell phone service, absolutely, with an asterisk on that. Two, defending public health. Three, defending property values. And four, upholding Tufftonboro town values. While it is true, and believe me, I've got my own fault here, I've done business out of Tufftonboro, there are other ways to increase your cell phone service. You can go to Amazon, you can buy boosters. For $400, $549, you can buy a booster that covers a 5,000 square foot home. And it really, if you're rating it on, these are four and a half stars out of five. If you want, if you have problems in your car for $199, you can buy one for your car. So there are other ways to get better cell phone service. I'm not denying that the cell phone tower would be very good for that, but we have alternatives. Now, defending public health, this is a tough one.
I should say that under Dartmouth v. Hanover, even over, the applicant is required to meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance. Nothing beyond outside of that.
I understand. But one of the, one of the board members encouraged me to make sure that I had all of my opinions and feelings thought and heard. So as I understand it, there are legal restrictions beyond that, I see other issues. And with public health, Verizon has a form that says the federal law mandates that cell tower construction cannot be denied for health reasons, and I understand that.
Within the limitations.
Within...
Within the permitted limitations.
Thank you. What is, do you have a copy of that, Bob? No, not even that, I'm just curious, do we, do we have access to the law, the federal law?
Yeah, I mean, it's probably on the FCC website.
Okay. I'll look it up. Thank you. Now, I have to admit, here in the USA, I've not found studies that provide definitive evidence of harm to public health. Neither have I found studies that provide definitive evidence in the safety of cell towers. Interestingly, there are studies from abroad that provide the dangers, prove the dangers of cell towers. I may just highlight a few of these real quickly. Now, and again, maybe this is a good question for Ivan. Cell tower regulations abroad, are they very similar to this FCC? In other words, say, in Germany or Israel, are they dealing with the same emissions regulations that we deal with, or similar?
I have no comment on that.
Okay. All right, thank you. But anyway, I do want to, and I'm going to be as brief as I can, this was submitted, and I think it's already been scanned, ended up minutes from April 1st. One German study, doctors examined 1,000 patients over a period of 10 years. And again, I'm going to briefly scan through this. They discovered that the proportion of newly developed cancer cases was three times higher for those living within 1,300 feet apart of a mile of cellular transmission compared to those living further away. And they found that patients became ill of cancer an average of eight years earlier. Another important observation from the research is that for the last five years of living here, cell phone tower risks are no different than someone living far away from them. However, in years six or 10, cancer rates jumped more than threefold for those living a quarter of a mile or less from mobile power. Even more concerning, the average age of diagnosis was much younger. In Israel, a similar study, out of the high exposure group, eight cases of cancer, this is a three to seven year period, were diagnosed within each, just one year, three cases of heart cancer, one case of ovarian lung, bone, kidney, and lymphatic, and the control group, only two cases. So the group was roughly, it was four times higher, the incidence of cancer. Again, it was, that seems to be a magical 1,300-foot area, quarter of a mile. Again, I'll be the first to admit, we don't know what these emissions are, but there is international evidence that these can be harmful. Man, the author says at the end of the article, what do you do if you live very close? If you find that you live within the inner circle of cellular towers, my suggestion is to consider moving. Going immediate, this is by far the best option, one person's opinion. And again, there's a bunch of them, I'm not going to go into them, but you know, this is, I thought, interesting. We talk about the ecology of our area, this is a Canadian publication... This is a Canadian publication. Today, unprecedented exposures of levels of intensity of magnetic, electric, electromagnetic field from numerous wireless technologies interfere with the natural information system and function of kings, animals, and plants. The consequences of this development, which have already been predicted by critics for many decades, cannot be ignored anymore. These and other insects vanish, birds avoid certain places and become disoriented to others, humans suffer from functional impairments and diseases. So, it's not just the humans, it's the affected. This, we're looking at property values, I think is something worth considering. I'll just do a few highlights here. This is from the National Institute of Science Law and Public Policy Survey, Neighborhood Cell Towers and Antennas, Do They Impact Property's Desirability, 2014. The overwhelming majority of respondents, ninety-four percent, reported that cell towers and antennas in neighborhood or building could impact interest in a property and the price they would be willing to pay for it. And seventy-nine percent said, under no circumstances would they ever purchase or rent a property within a few blocks of a cell tower antenna. Study results, ninety-four percent said a nearby cell tower or group of antennas would negatively impact interest in a property or the price they would be willing to pay for it. Further, it says seventy-nine percent said, under no circumstances would they ever purchase or rent a property within a few blocks of a cell tower antenna. The Impact on Cellphone Power on House Prices in Residential Neighborhoods was published by the Appraisal Journal and the Appraisal Institute in 2006. Appraisal Institute is the largest global professional organization for appraisers, with ninety-one chapters. The study indicated that home buyers should pay ten to nineteen percent less over, two over twenty percent less for property before in close proximity to a cellphone-based station. And the results of the sales analysis showed prices of properties were reduced by around twenty-one percent after a cellphone-based station was built in the neighborhood. And just so I'm clear, is a cellphone-based station the same as a cell tower?
Well, base station is a term that gets used other places, but, so I'm not sure what, what that's referring to.
Thank you. I was.
So, just to be clear, unlike a special exception of a variance, which would be the zoning board of appeals, the applicant is under no requirement to prove that there is no depreciation of property values.
I understand that. This is for public knowledge. I've spent quite a bit of time doing this research for obvious reasons that I stated earlier. And it's not just for myself and my native family. We have neighbors all down Tufftonboro, next road, on Eagle Mile Road, that are going to be affected in one way or another. And I think it's important, and we see both sides of the coin. Verizon has presented a very clear and honest case for their situation, and we're trying to just take a look at the other side of the coin. And there's evidence. This study says that research shows, indicates that over ninety percent of home buyers and renters are less interested in properties near cell towers and would pay less for property in close vicinity. Again, I'm going to zoom through this as quickly as I can. This one, cell towers and property values. Don't let the, the companies fool you by calling these structures DAS utility poles. That's something different than a cell tower? They are cell towers, it says they will radiate hundreds of lots of mercury radiation. There is a general perception that property values are perceived as a cell tower's problem. Perception is everything. If the public perceives it to be a problem, then it is a problem. It really does affect property values. Now, the state law, as you know, where did I put it? I may not remember. Now, this pertains to variance, so this does not apply. And I thought it was interesting to see that under the state law, it says that we cannot give variance to zoning board adjustments, you'll have to allow to authorize a therapy.
They're not asking for a variance.
Okay, I understand.
They don't need one.
And it says they can't give a variance of values if surrounding properties are Now, I think that we've already, I can skip over this because we did talk about the difference between the variance and the application, looking for, trying to clear the word here, waivers. That's a totally different thing.
Waivers are, are permitted waivers of the Site Plan Review Regulations. The board does not have the authority to waive zoning, only the zoning board of appeals can. But in a Site Plan Review Regulation, which is what we're here for, a Site Plan Review, the board has the ability to issue waivers from some of the regulations. So, the applicant is requesting three individual waivers. One is for soils, which they spoke about. One is for the height of the tower, which is permitted.
Yeah, well, how it reads, Matt read it, okay. In reviewing the site plan application, the planning board may allow an increase of up to one hundred and ninety feet total height provided that based on review of all the required submission data. And subsequent better design will result in such increase in the interest of the town. And then they tell us to go to the Site Plan Review, look at the waiver requirements, and we follow the waiver requirements.
And their last request for a waiver was a traffic impact analysis.
Thank you. And the last of the points that I'd like to make, upholding Tufftonboro master plan and planning board values. I say here that I know that I mentioned this in my letter, it was read in the minutes on April first, and I would briefly write this, that this is Tufftonboro, this is where the stated Tufftonboro master plan would protect and preserve a healthy environment and sustain Tufftonboro's ecological well-being. This is where neighbor helps neighbor. Further, the planning board mission statement says the planning board mission is to promote the health, safety, convenience, and general welfare, welfare of the population of the town of Tufftonboro, to protect and conserve the rural and recreational value of property. The studies I've read earlier prove that cell tower could, will cause the value of my sisters and my property, of my brother's property, and the value of all of our neighbors' properties to fall. International health studies, I, I scratched the word prove, but bring into question that people living near cell towers' health is threatened, and their chances of contracting cancer is three or four times greater than those who do not live near a tower. So, I do ask the planning board to promote the health, safety, and convenience and general welfare, welfare of the population of the town of Tufftonboro, to protect and conserve the rural and recreational value of property, as stated in the planning board mission statement. This is what we as your neighbors have entrusted to you. To vote for this tower would be contrary to my opinion, to all the stated values of Tufftonboro and the state of Manhattan. I appreciate your patience with me. I appreciate the education I've gotten. It saddens me that I'm sitting in a seat today. I think that there's enough evidence, at least to bring into question, the benefit of this tower as opposed to the downside of the tower, the property value especially, and health potentially. So, again, I'm really happy to sit here and God knows my neighbors better. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Yes, sir.
Tom DeDazio, seventy-nine, Tufftonboro, next road. A couple of questions or our comments, kind of late, heading into this item. The thought of a tower, to whatever height it would be, so you could put in Verizon on the top and two other levels below it of...
AT&amp;T.
Whoever that would be. Is the height of the tower so that Verizon can defer their costs by adding two tenants on their tower? Is that something that would be required for them to get the coverage that they need? That's the question, how that works out. And as was covered previously, with three times the volume of electricity and waves going out, it does triple whatever the initial exposures would be to however far out it goes. And we are within, I believe, it sounds like we're within about eight hundred to a thousand feet from wherever it would be, so we would be in that prime location. Also, how do they power these towers? It's electricity. Where's that power coming from? How do they get it there? Will there be transformers, what are the PCBs? Do we have to be concerned with overloads? And will there be humming and buzzing in the wires, the power lines that come up? Will there be lights blinking on the top of the tower? Or, there's just a number of questions I would have, is how do they get the power from whatever the source would be, up Tufftonboro next road, down Eaglemere? Is it going to be above ground, below ground? Are they putting in all new telephone poles? Are they digging up the roads? A lot of questions in that general direction.
So, the power is coming off the Eaglemere Road, it's going across the road, down a pole, underground for two hundred feet, or to propose that.
Wouldn't that be, I don't, I don't know how much juice a tower would require.
Are these similar three phases?
Is that power in the area? Do they run new lines?
No. We would pull six hundred, we need six hundred amps, single phase, and just pull that. And there would be a transformer right outside, a small one right outside the compound, and each carrier typically gets two hundred amps.
So, you're going to run, you'll be running, well, you have to because you're over three, so you're running primary up to the, up to your tower itself, so.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
So, basically, it's going to come across the road, goes down a telephone pole, just like any house.
Is there enough service to the neighborhood to carry that load?
Yeah, it's a, a simple transformer, six hundred amps. So, a normal house is, is two hundred amp service, so this would be the equivalent at six hundred amps of having three houses. So, it'll go down, underground, goes underground for two hundred feet, pops out of the ground, and then it goes aerial to the tower itself. There was no light on the tower, do I remember it?
Yeah, so, no light on the tower, no noise associated with the lines. We did the sound test, which assumed the generator running at full speed and nothing else, and it was like thirty-five dB.
The generator?
The backup generators, yeah. So, there's a battery that provides power for about six hours with that outage, and then the generator would kick in after six hours, of course, everybody's generator is on.
So, we have them run the numbers with all, all the carriers maximum output, so maximum sound, RF levels we're looking at are maximum for all three carriers. And we say it's, they say it's twelve to twenty percent, that's where all the carriers, if all of the antennas were on it, and they were all going at maximum capacity. And you may not have been here, but that's the town's engineer, RF engineer, who's basically reviewing their information, though they do have the privilege of handling it, and he has confirmed that what they're presenting is accurate. Okay, thank you. No problems. Thank you. Are there any other questions? Yes, sir.
I was saying, I hope I will be. My name is Steve Davis, forty-nine, Eaglemere Road. My family has owned our property for close to sixty years, and I thank you for reading my email to you. My major concern, I am a Verizon customer, I recognize that the cellphone coverage in the area is not what it could be, and I know that many of my neighbors, particularly those that run a business, would benefit from having that coverage. My major concern is the visual aspect, the visual pollution of it, because when the balloon test was done, I was riding my snowmobile on the ice, and it was very clear to me, very evident, but that was not from a location or a reference point that Verizon's application showed. Coming around Pick Point from the bottom of this pole out, it was very evident, and I really wish to minimize the impact of that. So, to the extent you can move that height limitation down to one oh eight, that'd be great. And also, if you could impose upon the requirement of making it more, look more like a tree with artificial branches, anything like that to make this kind of be less visible with the appall. So, thank you for running your meeting. Your questions that you were asked are the same as I had, and I think you're right on target, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to speak? Yes, sir.
Hi, Keith Huber, out in Tufftonboro, next road. I stated my position before, and concerns, obviously, for health and property value issues also becoming more of a concern as we look at possibly having a cell and leave the area. I'm also, you know, sure Mr. Davis is concerned about how insightly that size tower would be. I can remember back in the day being able to navigate the lake by the old airport beacon. Made it, made me pretty lazy about knowing my boobies because I could almost just see that beacon, and, and I'm sure that was not as tall, I don't know the exact height. So, I have to ask the question, is there, is there no other possible location that is at least a quarter mile from residences that can be considered? Is that my question?
We only have an application for this location, so. Are there any other questions? Yes, miss?
Christie Sarles, fifty-six, Eaglemere Road. I wonder what happens. We do have resident eagles on Eaglemere Road, from ice out to ice in. And I wonder what happens when one of them fills a nest on a cell tower? Perfect spot, right? High up? What, what's the procedure when that happens? When it protects a species?
It happens quite often. Lots of our towers have eagles on them, or, or any sort of bird. What, what happens is typically during the nesting period, or even kind of the timeframe between April and October, we don't disturb the tower at all. No one goes, you know, on it, no one climbs it, no one goes anywhere near it, really. There's no antenna swap out. When it's an active bird site, pretty much April through October, you're not doing anything on the tower.
I would imagine you're notified because that's a federal bird, U.S. Fish and Wildlife as well, and its existence? Just guessing.
Yeah, and it kind of depends whether, I mean, obviously bald eagles are not protected under the Endangered Species Act, but they're protected under, it's called BDPa, which is the Bald and Golden Eagle Protection Act, so it's a different law. So, there are some restrictions. If it's an osprey nest, you know, same protocol, but obviously ospreys are everywhere, so not the same issue. So, yeah, I mean, no matter what happens, you've got to comply with other laws. And if things arrive at your site, good news for the eagle, I guess, there's a nesting site, but it affects how we operate the sites.
Are there any other questions? Okay.
I have.
Yes, sir.
Bruce there from Tufftonboro next road. There are no cell towers in that picture.
Yeah, you're right.
No, no.
No other members of the public? Okay, can I have a notion to close the public session? I'll move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. All right. I think we should divide this into two different sections to talk about, one being the site itself, meaning the normal things, as in drainage, access roads, deades, power, such and so forth. After that, we will talk about the additional height request and the other two waivers that they've requested. The applicant has proposed running the power underground. Does everyone feel that the two hundred feet is adequate to allow? Does everyone feel that the 200 feet is adequate to allow tree cover to grow in so that if you're driving from the road, you could not see, you know, a giant gap?
200 feet, yeah.
200 feet is what they proposed? Bill, what do you think?
From the way it's described, that 200 feet will provide a visual from Eaglemere Road that does not include any poles other than the utility pole at the curb. And I'm guessing that poles further in, because of the tree cover on the property, you're not going to see from out at the roadside. So it's, if the objective is to maintain the character, that, that 200 feet provide, allows that to happen.
George?
I don't see an issue with it.
I have no issue with it.
No, I'm looking at the map. So 200 feet in takes a curve out of play. They're in the straightaway, which means you have no visibility from the road to where that pole is put in at 200 feet. So you don't see it. But I think the, the idea and the reason this was brought up before is to keep Eaglemere Road looking the way it does today. Basically, it was a simple gravel road, and it pretty much does that. So that pole across the street will bring that power down. One more pole you'll add there, you'll go underground. Be gravel with a gate, should be fine. Look good.
Tony?
I feel the same way.
I live up to Tuffinboro, North End. I walked down Eaglemere, visited the site. And yes, I agree. I think from the road, driving by, it will be, it will look very nice with the wooden gate, power underground, just that one pole. I don't have a problem with it.
With the site itself, they have provided stormwater discharge calculations. They have proposed infiltration trenches. It's probably above and beyond, it's well above and beyond what we require for a house. Stamped engineer plans. Does the board feel that the site itself and the circumstances of stormwater and with the proposed fencing, the gravel base meets the requirements? And do they take any issue?
With the gravel driveway in, that's all previous. So I think it was mentioned that it would be better than nature, so I don't have an issue.
Bill?
No issue.
No issue?
I have no issue.
No, I, I mean, I looked at the map and it's improved. So, which means it drains better after the finish of the power. Both comfortable. I wish you were here, but I wasn't.
In regards to accessing site during construction, I would imagine the number of trucks coming in is actually probably given the number, the height and length of the sections they mentioned are probably not a lot different from the home being there. To me, the applicant should be responsible for any damage that the road incurs just because there are back trailers that'll be coming in and out. And if, if approved, I would recommend that as a condition of approval. How does the board feel? George?
I don't see an issue with it at all.
Bill?
No issue.
No, I think no issue.
That's fine, they're responsible for anything that could be in the road, that's fine with that.
I think bringing all those things in, I mean, I think the longest piece of tower could be, you take the town divided by three, it'd be 42 feet.
It should be.
Easily brought in.
Other than it's a big chunk of concrete. Yeah.
A lot of ready-made trucks.
Yeah, shouldn't be an issue.
Okay. As far as the sound being discharged from the site, the applicant has given us with a single carrier, they have given us with three carriers, with generators.
Is it three carriers or four carriers?
Uh, four.
Could be four carriers, what you got?
Four carriers.
The four carriers, he was up to 49 decibels max.
Which met the requirement.
Maximum allowed, it's digital decimals.
That's with generators.
Everything on.
I have that right? That's what all the generators on.
Cooling fans, everything.
Cooling fans, the whole nine yards. Does the board feel that the, the sound requirements, the sound requirements have been met? Does the board have any concerns?
So the calculation that's been presented, or the representations that they made, is that it does not exceed the allowable with all of them running. And if I remember correctly, they also gave us a number for their own, just a single, which was?
Piece.
Right, which is much lower. But I do think that, that one of the requirements we should put in is a, is a measurement after, after it's built to ensure compliance with, with the state of numbers.
I would contend that another one, if approved, would be the verification of RF levels.
Absolutely. Measuring, measuring the, the RF levels. It's, it's the only way that we're going to know exactly what we have once it's done. And if it exceeds levels, then there's some responsibility that has to be done to bring it to the board.
George?
Make sure the sound levels are within columns and don't find a problem.
Kate? I'm sorry.
I agree that the requirement should be for verification that the levels are what it stated, but I think it's fine.
Tony, it's fine as well.
I agree with that.
I agree that it's important that they be verified, that they do meet the requirement.
Yeah, it should be, it should be stronger.
Style of tower. Some of this hinges on the height. They have presented three different designs. This is a hard one. The monopole, monopole of towers, and one that looks like a tree. A very poor tree.
Just clarification, so we've got two that we have proposed in the sense. One is the monopole with the external arrays. The second is the monopine that looks like a tree. I had even talked about a third option, which is the internally mounted. We haven't proposed that one because as Ivan mentioned, you've got to go up even higher because you need multiple levels. Whereas on the monopole, all the antennas are on a single level. So I think it's between the monopine and the monopole as shown in the sense.
I'm just curious, what is a fake tree cost?
I mean, for the, I mean, it's more, but.
I mean, I'm all paying for it, so.
I don't know, it's a hundred grand for a regular site and another.
Recently, I, I saw estimates that for, you know, galvanized pole is, it was like 70 grand and a monopine was 186.
Ouch. Okay. Well, I think my opinion on this varies somewhat with the height of the tower, which we're going to get to at a later date, at later time. But this is my thought personally. There's no question what drives the economy in this area. I mean, none of us can deny it. It's the giant puddle that's sitting there called Lake Waimasaki. So how it looks, how it feels, how it is, is extremely important to all of us. It's why some of us moved here. It's why, that's how some of us make our livings, and such and so forth. I've looked at the drawings, I'm sorry, the pictures and such and so forth. I, I know as I drive around from the barber's bowl and such and so forth, the tower will be visible. I look at the tower at Melvin Village every single day. It stands out. So to me, at the max, if this was when we get to the height, if it's at the maximum height, I would want to see a fake pine tree on it. At least for, not the, to me, not the entire tree, but the area that would be in view of the tree. How does the rest of the board feel? Gary?
Well, I, I like that idea. I know that, you know, I've been to that site three times. I went directly to the, where the ball was twice. And then I walked a conservation trail, cage trail, all down through there, which I couldn't see the ball from there because it's blocked by some of the trees. Some of those trees may come out, so it's hard to see what the final thing looks like. But I, I don't think you'll see it on the walks. So it's buried in there pretty well. But when it sticks up above, I agree with you. I'd like to see it decorated. I don't want to see it. I know that these people on the shoreline down Eaglemere already look at two big towers across Gunstock. Lit up. And the Melvin Tower, which is, you know, I'd like to have it.
I, I would, I would say I would be receptive to some calculations. I would be receptive to some calculations. Well, if you did that at Christmas, it'd be weird. Of angle of tree, you know. So basically, I only care about the part you could possibly see. I don't care about anything you can't see.
But when the forward season comes, the leaves in front of you drop off, that tree is going to stand out.
A little bit more.
Pretty much pine tree.
So I will offer that when you see one of those monopine cell towers, it's a cell tower. I mean, you, you, you know, you recognize it as a cell tower like, oh, now. What I can't tell you is how much less visible it is if I'm out on the lake and it's someplace and I don't see it. If you see it, you can pick it out as a cell tower. But I think the purpose of that is to make it less visible so that you don't see it as much. And what, what the tower looks like when you're standing on the property doesn't make any difference because I'm always going to see it standing or standing close by. But when you're out on the water or you're looking across the lake, like you say, with the tower at Melvin, it's, you, it, it's not hidden at all.
You know, and it, and it's different with different applications. In this case, you know, it's right on the lake. If this was, you know, Durgan Road, you know, you're on, you're, you're on the road and you're looking at it. You know, you're looking at trees, your tree's right there. When you're on the lake, it's there.
Well, when you're on the lake, you can see the windmills on Tenny Mountain. And I think the monopines are kind of silly looking myself, because you know what it is. But maybe we should seriously consider, for those that are far out in the lake, it may blend in. And you're right, this is our bread and butter. Everybody comes here because of that lake. So I guess I, I think if I had to vote, even though I don't like the way the monopines look because I think they're silly, it looks like a really cheap Christmas tree, I think the residents would be happier with us if we required that. So I think I would vote for that.
Okay, is that everybody's input on aesthetics? Okay. Next up, other issues I had, and if anybody has any other issues that they want to talk about, was the health. And we've gone into this in great detail. And I think that, Gary, would you?
On the health situation, I, I mean, I've read all the letters. I know some people have written that although they couldn't find a health issue, that they're concerned about health. Other people had noted that cell towers have been around a short time, 25 years. Actually, it's been around probably more like 45 years, maybe 50 years. I myself used to use a cellphone in 1983, it was my first cellphone. It's not about the phone, let's say, it's about the tower. And back then, there was plenty of towers in Massachusetts and southern and central New Hampshire. I did a lot of research and, you know, I went to American Cancer Society. And when I look at some of their, they have a really good evaluation on it. And they talked about RF being a non-pine-icing type, radio frequency wave, which basically is not able to cause cancer, according to them. Other things they talked about, ground level near typical cellular base stations, the amount of energy from RF waves is hundreds and thousands of times less than the limits for safe exposure set by the U.S. Federal Communication and other regulatory authorities. It's very unlikely a person would be exposed at RF levels in excess of these limits just by being near a cellphone tower. The American Cancer Society does not have any official position or statement on whether or not radio frequency RF radiation from cell phones or cellphone towers or other sources is a cause of cancer. Okay? So they refer to other agencies like the International Agency of Research of Cancer or the U.S. National Technology Program. They've talked to the World Health Organization. And basically, they hidden here that towers are, as they said, they, they won't give you that opinion, but this is the guy that they would be looking at, not a tower. So I'll give this to lean in for public knowledge, so it'll be put up there. This is, they're right up on it. I've read a lot of the other ones. Some of them, as you know, Ken, they're other countries. I don't know how they do what they do. I kind of know from this what we do. So what they do, and they're a good organization. So that's as much I've learned about it. So we know that FCC sets limits, and these guys are well under the limits. So.
Carol?
I agree with Gary. I did a lot of research online. I talked to, my daughter does clinical research. And other countries have different standards, different ways of studying. And I have to believe from what I've read, what she's told me, that we do it better in this country.
Tony?
I agree with that.
I, I guess I would, just to come back to what Ken said earlier. Studies from, from other countries where, I don't know specifically in those countries that the transmission levels were higher. But I do know that in many countries around the world, that the allowable transmission levels for RF energy are significantly higher than in this country. So there are, there are always things to be concerned about and to help, as individuals, to help us make our own decisions. I, I suspect as we look at the, the power levels falling down on the towers, I mean, our experts have talked about the fact that 20 years ago, that the, the radiation levels were higher than they are today. These companies have every incentive to reduce the amount of power they're using because power costs money. Okay? So if we can make something work more efficiently and use less power, it's going to save the cost. And, and that drives a lot of what goes on. And again, overall, this would be a federal regulation that, that's, that sets an upper limit on exposure, to which the engineers have identified. We are, we're only using a small fraction of this allowable limit.
George?
I think what was presented to us is that the RF frequencies are well within the standards. We love technology. There's a trade-off to everything we do, automobiles, machines, and so forth. It's, it's a double-edged sword, but I think the information that we receive validates going forward.
I think that they met with their requirement.
I think that they met with their requirement, and that the burden is met.
I think next we need to address is, if approved, when would we want to see these guys back? In other words, would we want to see them back each time there was a new carrier? Or would we want to see them back each time there was a substantial change in equipment that changed the radio frequency? I might ask Ivan very quickly. Ivan, do you agree on that?
Anybody who, there's two ways to approach this, is if another carrier applies, or, or, you know, wants to go on structure, in some municipalities, it's a building permit, it's just, it's issued. In other municipalities, they want the detail, because you want to get the coverage maps, you want that data, because if carrier B, down the road five, six, seven years, comes forward with a tower proposed, you can go back and say, well, wait a minute, you went on this tower, you gave us these maps five years ago that said this, you need this new tower in this part of town, because, it just, it's more data that you have that you can point to. So I would say that, yeah, that any new carrier that comes on board, you should have them come back in front of you, present the data, get the data, get the studies, have all that on record.
Do you have any recommendation, Ivan, about what changes in antennas may be substantial enough that the public should be aware?
So in their initial build, they will propose a certain amount of antennas. They, they, in their design, they have probably 12 antennas in their designs, four antennas per sector, but they may not build that on day one. So if they were to, you know, what they're actually going to build, they presented that, and if they do antenna change, they add antennas. Swap out of antennas happens, because technology changes, the antennas go, they, they put multiple bands into antennas, the antennas are becoming what's called smart antennas, where they can adjust the beam directions electronically. So those things happen, but if you're adding antennas, amount of RF, monopines, then they should just come back and update their data.
So you would recommend coming back for each new carrier with any additional antennas?
Right.
Okay. But we don't particularly want to see them every time something's broken on.
No, no, you don't need to, antenna swap outs and whatnot, no.
Matt, who would be responsible for coming back? Verizon, because they own the tower.
They own the tower.
So Verizon would have to come back.
Now, now, Verizon could sell this tower, and this happens in the industry, they, the carriers don't necessarily want to be in the tower business, so you just have to make sure that whatever conditions you put on, any kind of studies or whatnot, follows the ownership of the tower, as well, if there are conditions specific to ownership.
Okay. Good advice. Bill, what do you think, as far as coming back for each carrier, because we've heard what Ivan's recommendation is?
I, I would defer to Ivan on that. I mean, it, it, this is a guy that's been around this stuff for a while, and I like the idea that having full knowledge on record in the town of what's there, the next time somebody steps forward and, and wants to pursue another location, at least we have the past record of what has been there, and, you know, helps us move forward in what's market.
George?
I would defer to Ivan, I agree with all of that recommendation. I would, I think Ivan's strong on it, because it makes sense, considering he's been doing this for 30 years.
Agreed.
Yeah, I agree that each carrier, and I would say that if the power is sold, if the new buyer comes and resales it.
Okay, so that addresses that. Now we need to deal with three waivers, obviously, one of them is the important one, so let's get the routine ones out of the way. We've already read the waiver resection and requirements multiple times. One, soils data section, which has been submitted in writing, 4.3.2J. The site is not being used for waste disposal, is the gist of this, and the soils data really has no purpose whatsoever, in my personal opinion. They requested the waiver, they put it in writing, no jurisdictional wetlands exist within the project footprint. Tony, how do you feel about the first waiver request for section 4.3.2J, soils data section?
I'm going with that. I vote to go with it.
That makes sense.
I vote in favor.
So can I have a motion to approve the first waiver request for soils data section 4.3.2J? All those in favor?
Aye.
Second, traffic analysis, section 4.3.3M, they have requested a waiver from the Site for Number View Ordinance for traffic safety and a traffic impact analysis. The applicant has given us detailed information on, it's twice a month, other than when they're building it, it's, there's more, it would seem extremely burdensome to me to ask for a traffic impact analysis.
I have a problem with that. I, I find their argument persuasive.
Yeah.
I agree. There is no traffic.
There is no traffic. It's pretty welcome to the site, middle of January. Can I have a motion to approve the waiver for the traffic analysis section 4.3.3M? Okay. I'm sorry, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
The last waiver, and as we spoke about, we, I, I think you could argue that it's, because you're asking for it, it's a written waiver, but let's put it in the waiver section and give you a written waiver request on that, so if approved, that'll be a condition.
That's fine.
The last one is the height addition. This is the meat and potatoes, the whole thing. We've already talked about the site, we've talked about health, we've talked about all of that, we've talked about tree coverage, or, sorry, fake pine trees, the fact that we're not, we didn't put Christmas lights on it. Bill, the applicant has requested waiver as permitted in the telecommunications section and per Site for Number View Ordinance, is for a height up to 130 feet. The requirement is that it is in the best interest of the town, and that the design is substantially improved. Part of this is, as we've heard, the 98 feet had similar cell coverage in geographical area, but the population was, improved, 180, I'm sorry, the population was improved by 12 to 20 percent. I think common sense dictates a co-location, obviously, in 128 feet versus 180 feet, and...
Essentially, we have some of the Christmas trees up there.
So, starting with Bill, I'm sorry, it's getting a little late, so I'm getting a little far.
I, I support the 128 feet. I find the, the difference between the 108 and 128, according to the calculation, was 12 to 19 percent population. More, more coverage of actual users as opposed to just landscape. To me, that's persuasive. I mean, it's, it's going to stick above the tree line, and it's going to stick a fair amount above the tree line. You for it? If we're 40 to 50 feet above the tree line, or 60 to 70 feet above the tree line, we're going to try and disguise anything with a, with the monopine, and, and achieve better coverage, that is, fewer dropped calls for people on the roads and in the populated areas. I think the additional height makes sense.
Gary?
I agree, it, it really comes down to, does it benefit more people than not? It does. 120, this is one way, benefits a lot more people. And that's important, and that's part of our RSA. And I think with a monopine, way to go. You know, from what I visualize, when I, when I'm at that site, again, there's no tree kindling down yet, but there's some pretty tall stuff out there, you know, so that can't be average, it's just an average of 60, 80, but there's some guys up there, you know, they're at the 120 mark. So I think the exposure will be somewhat minimal, more so than you might think, and I think with the, with the pine tree look, it should be quite sufficient.
Carol?
It says they're in the interest of the town, and I, yeah, if it's up to 19, 20 percent improved coverage, it's better in the town, so I vote with it.
I think for me, it's not only that, but it's the fact that, I mean, co-location wise, you know, any, well, first of all, any concern I would have about aesthetics is kind of resolved by the fact that it's a fake pine tree. But, you know, co-location wise, I don't want the town to be in a position where we're sticking another cell tower out there, because it's 108 feet, and now it's 98 feet below, and we're looking at another cell tower, which dropped, or it's dropped, or it's down, or something like that, over 20 feet, which probably isn't an amount.
Yes, let's hope this is the last cell tower for Tupperware.
Tony?
Yeah, I can consider that's it, just, we're going to do, let's do it right the first time.
George?
I support the total kind of.
Can I have a motion to approve the third waiver, which is the height increase to, is it 128 feet or 130?
130.
130. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So as we've been going through the meeting, I have come up with a list of conditions, and I'm going to read off what I have, if anybody has something that's not covered, please feel free to mention it. Some of these are already covered in the application, but I'm going to put it in there anyway. One, I had is 200 feet of buried utilities from the road. Two was a gate of wood, or wood synthetic, if you would prefer, rustic, farm, fitting with the main road. Three, the tower is to be a monopine, so it's a technical term. I know in other towns, there's quite a bit of discussion on how many branches, and how many, you know, things like that is, has, has. I would like to just have one person from the board be responsible for that, to work with you, on what they think is reasonable, is that?
That, that totally works. Yeah, usually the branches go where the array is with some stepping, but if you designate someone, we can work with that person.
That way, it keeps it simpler for all parties. So, any volunteers?
I'll do it.
Tony and I will do it.
Yeah.
We work together.
Any issue with that?
No, not at all, that's great.
They decorate that company Christmas.
Let's put a lot of white lights.
Four, and I believe we talked about this in the first meeting, was space available for emergency services antenna? We may already have this, but fire department sign off?
I don't think we have it yet, but that we can do, like, condition project, pulling a building.
Yep. Related to that would be another condition, would be, which would be a NOX box or access for emergency services in town.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, the space for emergency services antennas, are you specifying the top of the tower? Or are you just saying space?
Ivan, what do I want?
Top of the tower.
I would like the top of the tower.
Usually, we can go width on top, that doesn't interfere with the array because of the difference in the frequency, so.
I, I actually think it's very unlikely that they're going to want to put it there, because I spoke with them about it, but why not?
Yeah, and our policy is free access for emergency municipal equipment, we just have to check the engineering and make sure nobody, lights, or anybody on the tower, but other than that's free.
Fire department's very easy to work on. Applicant is responsible for all damage caused by construction on town roads. Eight bonds for removal of tower. Verification of RF levels and sound levels upon completion of construction before a tower goes into operation.
That would be a power density study.
Power density study. I'm glad you're here.
And we also talked about a sound level.
Applicant or owner of tower shall return to the planning board for each new carrier That's all I had. I think there should be 13 in total. Does any member?
You indicated new antennas, what about new equipment that would go at the base as far as updating the sound study?
It's part of maintenance, isn't it?
Well, antennas don't generate noise, it's the noise is generated at the base, so.
So we didn't bring Ivan here not to take his recommendations. Correct, so another recommended, another condition would be applicant shall return for substantial, substantial increases in...
Equipment at base.
Equipment at base of tower.
So the, just because, so new carrier company, AT&amp;T, coming in front of the planning board, that totally works for us, mostly because we're not AT&amp;T.
Yeah.
But if we do, as Ivan had indicated, we have to upgrade antennas, they get damaged, they get replaced, that's okay, it's only if we add, I think, new equipment in addition to what we're replacing out, that would trigger a...
Correct, just so we're clear, if you were like, hey, we're really going to crunk it up.
With 40 antennas on top.
Yeah, you'll be the crumpets.
Or the, or the, the federal government has another option, and you add another cabinet at the base of the tower.
Okay. Go on with that. That was substantial increases in equipment at the base of the tower, applicant shall return to the planning board.
Matt, can we just ask one question for you to Ivan? As Ivan noted, the number of antennas that go up initially may not be fixed, normally 12 to 15 is the range, I think the plans show 12, because that's the default, but what we'd like is authority to, to go up to 15.
Is that reflected in the data you gave the board that we've been, I mean, as far as your RF frequencies, your, we've talked about?
No.
No.
It's, it's...
I think it's just based on 12.
It's based on 12.
So, so one option is, if it's just to go to 15, it would be a building permit, provided we show the code officer the updated RF calculation to make sure it's, you know, it's gone from 2.1 to 3.1, or whatever, very low, just because I think that kind of, like, as-built final tweak can be somewhat common.
What did you present in your data on 12?
The RF data we gave is 12, and the plans show 12.
And you got 12.
Okay.
Unless you would like to come back to the board for additional antennas?
No, well, I think we'll go with 12 now, and then...
For what? The existing, if a carrier on County Road, like Verizon RF, is on that, right now, say they have 10 antenna, they don't have to come back. they have 10 antenna, they don't have to come back to get 12.
It was not a condition that they're improving.
Okay.
Quite honestly.
Yeah, yeah.
Let me rephrase that. They've never, I have not read that decision, but they, I have never seen them come to the board for another carrier, you know, to the board.
Right.
Matt, can I just clarify that you're asking them to come back for site plant approval? Is that the language you want me to use? Or an amendment to?
Amendment to the existing site. And all applicable state, federal, and local permits. That's all I have. Does any member of the board have any other conditions that they would like to discuss, or did any member of the board object to any of the conditions listed? So with that, can I have a motion to approve the application with the conditions listed? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Appreciate all your time.
Thank you, guys, so we'll be seeing you again soon.
See you first.
I mean, I think continue these mergers on the next meeting.
Yeah, that's fine, because there are going to be conditions on the midway, and Sean, Sean is on the last to the bridge.
It's, it's a natural plan update for next week, it's almost. I have a motion for adjournment.
All those in favor?
Sorry. I'm sorry. That's a good. Yes, great.